Good afternoon. Welcome to the 1:45 PM public portion of the closed litigation session of the October 9, 2018 meeting of the City Council. In this part of the meeting, the Council will receive public testimony. Thereafter, the Council members will move to the Courtyard Conference Room for the closed session. I'd now like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cron is absent.
He gave notice that he was not going to make closed session.
Matthews? Here. Chase is absent. Brown?
Here.
Norroyan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Here.
And Mayor Tarazas?
Here. Before we open public comment, I have a brief announcement. The City Attorney will provide a report on items listed on the closed session agenda at the beginning of the 2:06 PM public session. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to any items listed on our closed session agenda? I think that's you. So come on up and you can speak. Just go to the mic and you'll have an opportunity to speak.
Hi. Two minutes. Oh, my God. Hi. You guys have already heard from me by mail. My name is Irene Busch, B-U-S-C-A-H. And I was enjoying, on a weekday, a very empty cowl beach, because it was a weekday, with low waves, nice placid cowl beach. And there was a lot of kelp with those little insects around, and there was this tractor with long fangs that come out where he scooped up. The man driving the tractor scooped up the icky kelp, flicked it back, and was cleaning up the beach. I was on the north side of the beach. You know, I kind of swam when I saw him, and I was hoping he wouldn't get my bag. And I swam and swam, and I was about the same power. I was like kind of parallel to him on the north end of the beach, and I saw the fork scoop up my thermal big bag that I had, a lot of stuff enlisted in the correspondence that you have already received from me. I was screaming from the water, "Stop, stop." But of course, the motor was revving up like at 300 to 500 decibels, so he couldn't hear me. But eventually, you know, I was jumping up and down, and he did stop. And I said to him, "He scooped up my bag with all my possessions." All I had at that time was me and my wet suit, no towel, no nothing, no keys to my car, no personal possessions. And I was stranded, and my husband had to come all the way down from Livermore, he works at the lab there, and come and rescue me. We were then shown a big pile of icky, fetid, stinky, insecty kelp.
You can continue just to wrap up the sentence.
But it was too smelly and giant a heap for me to dig through, to look for it. And I think that's very unfortunate, and I think that the -- so I did have a brief conversation with him where he said, "I am very careful. This could not have happened." And I said, "You may try to be careful," and this happened. And I, you know, you can't argue. So when Jeff was down there, we didn't look.
Ms. Bush, thank you.
We didn't look.
Hey, Ms. Bush, if you have your -- we have your email address, but if you could maybe write it down, I'll make sure someone from the Risk Management Department contacts you in regards to the disposition of the claim after our opening, our public session this afternoon.
Was I supposed to say, "I am asking to be compensated for the lost items"?
I think it was understood, but I appreciate you for saying that.
So that's all? Put my email address on?
Yes, please. Thank you. Are there any other members who would like to speak to the closed session agenda? Please go ahead, sir.
I'm Jeff.
Speak to the mic.
I'm Jeff Bush, Irene's husband, and I just wanted to explain what happened. I was in Livermore at work about noon this, I think it was August 9. And I got a call from Irene saying that a big bulldozer at the beach had scooped up her bag, and she didn't have anything. She had no clothes, no car keys. And can I come down and get another set of car keys and rescue her? So that's what happened. I came down. I spoke to lifeguard. Lifeguard said, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I was here." He pointed me to a spot where huge mounds of kelp and dirt were -- he said, "That's where it is. Go look if you want." But I was unable to find anything. So I just want to say I'm corroborating what she said.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to the closed session agenda item? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting to the Courtyard Conference Room, where the Council will now go into its closed session. read in the paper or heard about it directly, really take a moment to remember Judge Jeff Omquist, who passed away on, suddenly, on October 7, 2018 while on vacation, Lyon, France. He was 70 years old. He was a judge of the Santa Cruz Superior Court since October 2003, appointed by Governor Gray Davis, and he served as the court's presiding judge in 2010 and 2011, guiding the court through an extraordinarily difficult crisis with great leadership. Judge Omquist most enjoyed the family law assignment in which he sat for the past seven years in the Watsonville Branch. He also sat in the civil and criminal assignments during his bench career. And I was greatly saddened to learn of his passing. I just wanted to take a moment to begin the meeting with a moment of silence for him, and then, so if we do that, I'd appreciate it if we could just silently remember him at this time. Okay. Before we begin our regular City Council meeting, we need to have the annual meeting of the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Authority, the IDA, and the Santa Cruz Public Improvement Financing Corporation, SCPIFC. City Council members serve as board members on these boards, which were created for the purpose of providing the city an instrument to issue bonds. Annually, while the bonds are in existence, the board members are legally required to hold a meeting of the IDA and SCPIFC. The meetings are procedural and for the purposes of approving minutes and electing new board members. So I'd now like to ask the clerk to, well, first of all, call to order the October 9, 2018 Annual Meeting of the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Authority, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Cron?
Here.
Matthews?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Norroyan?
Here.
Watkins?
Here.
Vice Chair Tarazas?
Here.
And Chair Chase is absent.
Mayor, can I just make a quick comment on Judge Omquist's passing?
Yes.
Without losing it, I remember going to him for a meeting in 1997, thinking about running for City Council, and he was incredibly helpful. He was giving. He was open and very extremely helpful with his years of elective service, and just offering that advice really helped. And I share your sadness for his passing.
Thank you, Chris.
If I may as well, since I'm on the topic. I, too, have the opportunity to work with Judge Omquist through our youth programs, and he has been committed, for as long as I've been running the programs, to supporting youth in preventative upstream investments in children. And so I, too, was very saddened to hear about that and have been grateful to work with him along the way.
Thank you. We'll go back to the agenda. So Councilmember Matthews.
I will go ahead and move the adoption of minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Sorry.
Those opposed? None? That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Cron absent, or Councilmember Chase absent. Okay, thank you. Are there any -- we'll go, actually, before I go on, this is something where it is procedural, but are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item? Thank you.
And?
The election of officers.
I will move the election of officers as set forth in the agenda report.
Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Matthews, second by Vice Mayor Watkins. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the election of the officers? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. At this point, I'd like to adjourn the Industrial Development Authority and move on to our main meeting. I'd like to now call to order the October 9, 2018 Annual Meeting of the Board of Directors of the Santa Cruz Public Improvement Financing Corporation. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Director Cron?
Here.
Matthews?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Norroyan?
Here.
Watkins?
Here.
Vice President Tarazas?
Here.
And President Chase is absent.
All right. This is for approval of the minutes of the October 10, 2017 Santa Cruz Public Improvement Finance Corporation. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this item? I see none. I'll bring it back to the Council for a motion. Councilmember Brown.
I'll move approval of minutes. Second.
I'll give that one. Councilmember Norroyan. So a motion by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilmember Norroyan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Now I'd like to turn over to the election of the officers for the organization.
Move the slate as presented. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Matthews, second by Vice Mayor Watkins. Any members of the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Council for action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Now we'll go on to the main agenda. And so, good afternoon. Welcome to our 2:06 PM session of the October 9, 2018 meeting of the Santa Cruz City Council. I'd now like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmembers Cron?
Still here.
Matthews?
Here.
Chase is absent. Brown?
Here.
Norroyan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Here.
And Mayor Tarazas?
Here.
Now, if I can have the clerk, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, you were really busy today with the numerous roll calls and the pledge. Thank you. Okay, so now, at this point in the agenda, it's an opportunity to introduce new employees to the City of Santa Cruz. I'd like to first invite up Director of Parks and Recreation, Tony Elliott, who is a new employee himself and is now introducing new employees.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Council. Yeah, it's my honor today, as a two-week-old employee, to introduce Matt Heber. Matt comes to us from Breckenridge, Colorado. Matt is with the Parks Maintenance Division. He's in the East Zone. His supervisor behind us is Mike Godsey in the back. So had an opportunity to meet Matt briefly earlier this week, and Matt, in many ways, is kind of an ambassador to the parks. He's got a very infectious, kind of warming smile and greetings, so if you see Matt out in the parks, I think that's the first thing you'll notice. Matt and his wife, Alicia, have two kids, originally from Chicago, Illinois. They've moved around a little bit, but are back here in Santa Cruz, again, on the Parks Maintenance Team. So again, it's my privilege and honor today to introduce Matt to you all. Please say hello to him. He may be out at Arana Gulch, Frederick Street Park, places like that. So again, this is Matt.
Hey, thank you. Welcome, Matt. Now I'd like to invite up Director of Public Works, Mark Dedel.
Mark Dedel, Director of Public Works. It's my pleasure to introduce three employees. Next to me is Andrew Camilleri. He's a new service maintenance trainee, works with asphalt patching, cleaning the culverts, sign and replacements. He's in streets and traffic. Andrew was actually, was born in Oklahoma. In about a few weeks, he ended up moving to California. So lived most of his life in California. He went to high school in San Jose and then moved to Santa Cruz in 1994, currently lives in Live Oak. He passed work experience. He worked for Sea Cloud and now is Alita's for 19 years before working in the telecommunications industry in Union City for about three years, where he placed fiber optics for the fiber networks. And he's had some junior college studying psychology and biology. And when he's not working, he enjoys riding his bike around town, hanging out with his friends. It's a little beach time and enjoying our fine restaurants. So please welcome Andrew. And next to Andrew is Miguel. Next to Andrew is Miguel Lezarraga. He's our new assistant engineer. He's working with inspections and development review. Miguel was born in La Paz, Mexico, and grew up in Santa Cruz, currently lives in the Seabright area. And he's passed work experience. He worked for Barry Swenson Builders as a project engineer. Kind of, we did a trade. We had, his previous position went to Barry Swenson, and he's come back. So I guess a player to be named later is Miguel here, so. And then also worked for Bowman &amp; Williams and Sancasa USA Civil as a project engineer. Went to Brant Saftory, New Brighton, SoCal High, Cabrillo College, and San Jose State University. And when he's not working, he enjoys outrigger canoeing, scuba diving, spearfishing, Olympic weightlifting, CrossFit, mountain biking, and camping. And a fun fact, he also enjoys playing the ukulele, so. And then you can welcome Miguel. And next to Miguel is Isshell Polito. Isshell Polito, she's our new waste reduction assistant, works with resource recovery. She was born and raised in Southern California and currently lives in Capitola. Past work experience mainly with environmental nonprofits like Keel de Bay, LA Waterkeeper. And during her time with the organizations, she helped educate underrepresented community members about water pollution in Southern California beaches and the importance of environmental stewardship. She attended CSU Long Beach and a double major in anthropology and environmental geology. And during her free time, she enjoys hiking, running, and climbing at the local gym. Fun fact, she's bilingual and can speak Spanish. So please join me in welcoming Isshell.
Welcome to each of you. Okay, now I'd like to invite up the Director of Water, Rosemarie Menard.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased here to be here today to introduce Sidney Groob, who's a new Assistant Engineer I with the Water Department. Sidney grew up in Brantwood, but she's come to us recently from her college education, which she graduated from Cal Poly in San Luis Obispo last June. And she moved back here to Santa Cruz to take the job that we offered her, and she's been here maybe about a month now, or maybe a little bit longer. Sidney has done internships before with Shelter Dynamics, which is a private design and construction company, Santa Clara Valley Water District, and the city of Redwood City. So she's been working on a number of things related to the sort of water resources issues. And she likes to spend free time visiting with family, friends, relaxing on the beach, reading, hanging out with her cat, and finding any new craft or art projects. So the next time we're around, when we have the city art exhibit, we'll be looking for works from Sidney. And she's planning on attending some evening classes at Cabrillo College starting next semester. Sidney's going to be working for us on, specifically on the groundwater management issues. She's already been starting to do some works on looking at groundwater monitoring for our wells in the Belt area, the part of the Mid-County groundwater agencies. And we had a nice chat about everything that's going on in Mid-County, which is a lot right now. So she's got a really good opportunity to be involved in all the groundwater sustainability planning work that's going on in the area. So please welcome Sidney Groob.
Last meeting, we had one of the Council members from our sister cities, and he was here for the introduction of new employees, and they said they didn't do that in Italy, but he's going to start recommending they do that there as well for all new employees at their meetings. I thought it was nice that he was able to see that, because it's sometimes unique in other places. I'd like to now invite up the Young Writers Project. I'd like to invite up Julia Ciappella, the Director of the Young Writers Program, and Martha Mendoza. There's going to be a workshop this coming weekend, and they have, and also Connie Bertucca to talk about the program for us this afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers, for having us here today. I know that I sent along a video, which I'm not sure if we were able to get to. Oh, it's going to play? Okay.
Do you want me to play it now?
Well, first, I just want to say thank you very much for the proclamation today. And as you may know, the Young Writers Program has been around for a few years now. And this essay workshop we are having on Saturday is for our local high school students. And as a project of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education, we are working to embed writing as a significant aspect of students' education. We believe it's absolutely necessary for our democracy, for their critical thinking still, skills. So we really appreciate this proclamation, and we'd love to have you take a look at the video. I was in fourth grade in Notre Dame Academy in Los Angeles, California. I happened to write a poem that subsequently received a lot of attention from the teacher. It got a nice little silver star and a red star, and it got put up on the board. That's a small bit of attention for a small little poem, but it was huge in my mind. The Young Writers Program began in the fall of 2012 as a project of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education. We wanted to generate an opportunity for students around writing that includes plenty of revision and is geared toward publication. So students' writing is gathered into professionally designed and produced books that are then available for purchase to the public through local bookstores. This creates a powerful incentive to write. What's unique about the Young Writers Program is that it affords students an opportunity to have one-on-one attention with a writing mentor. We recruit volunteers from the community who are trained to work with students and their writing. And they work with students for about six to eight weeks, a couple times a week, for an hour each time, in grade four through 12 public school classrooms, and in our after-school writing center, the Word Lab.
I think that our public school teachers are put into a bad situation by having 35 students in a classroom, and there's just no way that they can give each of those students the individualized attention that each of them deserves. And so I think having this additional after-school space for them to tap into that creative writing part of them is really important.
I'm used to spending most of my time in isolation with 35 adolescents, and to have six to nine members of the community to come and help share my experience and share the experiences of my students is invaluable to everyone involved. Teaching children how to write is a craft, and Young Writers Program brings another level to this, where no longer is it just an assignment, it becomes a part of their life and something that becomes extremely personal and important to them.
The feedback on the NRS program has been nothing short of stellar, and that's from teachers, students, and volunteer participants. I had an opportunity to go to one of the school readings a while back, and the audience was packed with parents and students. And the students had an opportunity to go up and express themselves publicly through their writing. It's making a difference. It's making a difference in their writing, in their test scores. Very pleased to be a part of the program.
Writing requires attention. There's no way around that. It requires an adult to listen to a child and to guide them and to hear them, to really hear them. And you can't do that when you have 30 kids and you're just one adult. The Young Writers Program, through the Word Lab, the Chamber of Heart and Mystery, and through a lot of their other programs, finds a way to bring a passionate teacher in front of a passionate student to allow them to develop their voice.
Kids have a lot of emotions. They're going through a lot of things. Their families are going through a lot. They can come to Word Lab and sit down next to an adult who is so invested in them and cares so much about them and about their writing that they can, you know, open up and start to process through their emotions through this creative way.
I've definitely started enjoying poetry and writing in general, because for a while, writing was something I absolutely hated, just something I couldn't really enjoy or get creatively into. So it's definitely something that I can honestly say I enjoy now, and my view and outlook on it has definitely changed.
One of the things that was so important to me as a teenager growing up and what encouraged my sense of myself as a writer was my high school teacher, Mr. Black. And as a teenager who had been moved frequently and who tended to suffer from bouts of depression, his focus on my writing probably saved my life when I was a teenager. Writing has huge capabilities to not only save individual lives, but to change the world.
The Young Writers Program depends on donations from individuals like you to continue this important work. Please consider making a generous contribution today.
Thank you so much, City Council, for supporting us. And I just wanted to say a little bit about what's happening this weekend and how it came about, very briefly. For many years here in Santa Cruz, as a writer, I was called by anybody who knew me at college essay time to help their kid through their college essays. And I always was happy to do that, but it was becoming very busy every fall for me to have one-on-ones with lots of kids. And when I approached Julia and the Young Writers Program about codifying this into something bigger, she immediately said yes, and Connie was ready to go. And so now in our fourth year, we've helped hundreds of kids through their college essays. The young men and women in Santa Cruz have incredible experiences and have done and been through so very much. And to coach them through telling those stories, getting them in writing, and having them be something that's going to catch the eye of a college admission officer is really an honor, and we have an incredible day together. So thank you for your support, and I look forward to seeing some of you on Saturday.
Thank you. Now I'll just read a little bit of the proclamation, but founded in 2012, the Young Writers Program supported over 1,900 students countywide in their writing. And the program has established the Word Lab, Chamber of Heart and Mystery at the Santa Cruz Museum of Art and History. And for the past six years, the the Young Writers Program has produced over 40 professionally-produced publications of student writing. And the Young Writers Program will hold its fourth annual college application essay workshop on October 13, 2018, for high school juniors and seniors looking for guidance in writing their college essay applications this year. Now, therefore, I, David Terasas, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim the week of October 7 through the 13 as Young Writers Program Week in the City of Santa Cruz and encourage all citizens to join me in congratulating them on their contributions to the Santa Cruz community. So thank you. Can you briefly, as I walk down, can you tell the public on how students that might want to attend the workshop, how they might do that?
Absolutely. So students can go to the Young Writers Program website at youngwriterssc.org. And our events page there will guide them to the registration, both for October 13, this Saturday, and October 24 at Pajero Valley High School.
Hey, get one for Ferris here.
Hey, guys.
Hey, hey, back in line.
Nice.
You said her name.
Thank you.
David, I have a couple of questions, too, if I could ask. Just one other question. I do recall, in the past, you're recruiting for coaches for the college essay. And obviously, it's too late for this year, but could you explain?
We have, and usually, we do that by word of mouth. So far, that's sufficed. So I'm not sure how we'll start to do that differently in the future, but we tend to have a lot of people that respond and are very anxious to do this, because the day is incredibly rewarding, as Mayor Terasas can attest to. So it's a wonderful day for our community members. And Rochelle has been there, too. And so has Councilmember Chase. So we tend to get the word out as best we can. So if you would like to help with that at any point, that would be terrific.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll confirm that. It is incredibly rewarding, especially seeing kids that go to college or that leave, and you see them back in the community, and you recognize them and talk with them about their experience. So I'm looking forward to being there tomorrow. Or Saturday. Okay, thank you. Now, I'd like to invite up a presentation from Food What and Beckman's. This is Jerome Comonchera, from Executive Director of Food What. And I don't know if Skye is with you?
Skye is with his baby.
Okay, there you go. So thanks. I just thought, getting up to the holiday season, we just had the Harvest Festival. This would be an appropriate presentation.
Got a little tutorial from Bonnie before I began.
All right.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome everybody back here. My name is Jerome Comonchera. I'm the founder and Executive Director of Food What. And thank you for having me. There's a million Food What things that I would love to share with you, but Mayor Terasas invited me today to talk a little bit about our collaboration with Beckman's. And so I have a few slides. And I'll give you a quick overview, first of all. So I think it was about two years ago, Mayor Terasas said to me and to Skye Quinn, who's in upper management at Beckman's, "You guys should know each other. You're both feeding a lot of people. Something great could happen." And so he came up to our Santa Cruz site. And we showed him around, started talking about the youth empowerment and food work we're doing. And he said, "We should make a product together." And this is great, because the previous year, we had done sauerkraut with Katherine Lucas from Farmhouse Culture. It was a total hit. From every aspect of the process was a job training opportunity for the young people that we serve. It was, it's fun, it's hands-on, it's experiential, and it's totally sandwiched right in our mission of growing food, harvesting it, sharing it with the community. So I brought a few slides. And I'll start with the slide. So this is Elstolia planting this year's crop. So this is what most people think of when they think of a pumpkin. I literally grabbed this out of the ground, so I apologize if there's leaves. And do you know what this is called, this part of the pumpkin? Peduncle. It's just a fun word to say. So I grabbed this on the way out. But we plant a variety called Red Curry, which is technically a winter squash. And we plant a few hundred row feet, and it yields about double that in poundage and then yields about half that in pies. So this is Elstolia. She's planting in probably June. This is Jimmy, also putting the seeds in the ground. And so I just showed you the beginning of this year's crop. This is the end of last year's crop. So Abby, who's in the top left, she's a recent Santa Cruz High alum. And she was in our fall program last year. And in the top-right corner, she and Ozzy, who recently graduated from Renaissance High School. That is the two of them pouring, basically pouring the pie mixture into the shells at Beckman's. And what's really amazing about this partnership is Beckman's being a 30-plus-year institution in this community. I remember when I first moved here and I was going to the farmer's market, and I just remember seeing this plethora of Beckman's pies. And breads, and of course, cookies and everything. So Skye said, "As a company, we really want to support young people. We really want to do something that gives them real-world training and job opportunities." So we basically, at Food What, we plant the seeds, we maintain the crop, we harvest it, we let them cure, and then we bring it to Beckman's. In over two days, we'll make the pies. And this year, we'll make close to 300 pies. And so what are we doing? We're slicing, baking, and scooping. And they have these amazing ovens. They're actually called walk-in ovens, which sounds like a terrible thing for a human being. But you walk in, and you put all the trays in, and then you walk out, you shut the door, and everything moves. And the youth are sort of like, "Oh, this is like Disneyland. This is really cool, except we're making food." So I thought that was really positive. And you could see them, the first day was all about creating the stuffing, and then the second day, we come back and pour off all the pies. We work with the Beckman's team to come up with a logo. I think that's, here we go, "Youth Powered Pie and Sourced with Organic Pumpkins, Sown, Grown, and Baked in Santa Cruz by Food What Teens in Partnership with Beckman's." And what's really exciting is, last year, we made 140 pies. We kept 40 to give to the youth and their families, and we do a little Food What Thanksgiving. And then we sold 100, and we sold them very easily. And that was wonderful for a nonprofit, to have an income-generating stream. We sold them for around $20. And so that was $2,000. That was the biggest pie sale, baked sale, you could imagine, with tons of job development in the way. And this year, we actually have a third partner involved, which is New Leaf, and they're very excited to promote this. So they're going to put these in all of their stores, put it in their circular that goes out and social media. So it's really become an opportunity for our youth to see their products all over the county and even beyond Half Moon Bay and things like that. Went too far. Now she's over there. Hold on. Yeah. And this is Elstolia and Ozzy, last year, selling the pies. We also did some marketing at the downtown market. And the last thing I'll share, and if there are any questions or comments, is I was hoping to get one of the youth who worked on this last year to come. And the one who may have had an opening in her Cabrillo schedule was Evelyn. And she unfortunately wasn't able to come, because she did have a class today, which is wonderful. But I did think about, it would have been a little ironic, because she's the only vegan on the crew, so she actually never tasted the pies. But she was very proud of it, and she would have really shared a lot of the process and what it meant to her to create something and spread it throughout the community. So the last thing I'll say is, I really appreciate being called in today. I think you blew it. I think this is the wrong day to have had me, because if you had me a month from now, I probably would have been leaving a pie with you.
We'll invite you back.
Oh, I see how this works. Okay. Now, I'll make sure that the mayor gets a pie and everybody gets a slice, especially you. Thank you for all your help. And yeah, that's it. I just wanted to share a little bit about what we're doing. So thanks for the opportunity today.
Absolutely. Are there any questions? Sandy?
I actually just have a comment. I want to say that this program is very near and dear to my heart. I've been acquainted with the students over the years in the program and know Jerome and others who have worked with the program. And I just think, I mean, it's obvious that it's an amazing program. This is an exciting partnership. But I want to say that, when I, so I worked for a local farm for many years, and one of my roles was to give farm chores. And Food What came, it was in the early years. I think it was 2006? When did you guys start?
Seven or eight, yeah.
Seven or eight, okay. And so, I mean, we did chores with people from all over the world, delegations, lots of people from the sustainable ag world. And the students from, the young people from Food What, by far, asked the best questions, really probing questions. They really wanted to understand how the farm worked. They wanted to understand what it was like to work on a commercial farm. And it was just amazing. Then I had the privilege of living right next to a farm that operated in Santa Cruz for a long time, Free Willan Farm. And the Food What crew would come out. And I also was, I did work at home for some days of the week. And I remember when they would come, the excitement just filled the field in front of my house. And I would go out there every opportunity I had so I could interact with them and get to know them. And it was just amazing to see how excited they were about the program and amazing to see your program grow.
Thank you, Sandy.
You know, I encourage people to learn more about Food What and support this program however you can.
Chris?
I'm going to pile on to that, because we've known each other for a while, and we've sent a lot of interns to Food What. But what's really important about the program is, in my, I think, is that it provides an outlet for high school students, which is something that's really missing as far as working with your hands in agriculture and stuff. Because we have a great Life Lab program in Santa Cruz County, but it only goes up to a certain grade, you know, 6th grade generally. And I think Food What really found a niche, and there's a ready audience out there, as you've proven. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say, I really am happy that this partnership works. And I know that Skye, you know, she's got a brand-new baby, but they're also very excited at Beckman's in terms of how they can work with you. And so it's great to see youth working and also creating a new revenue for you and your nonprofit through a local business. So congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thanks. Okay, I have a few announcements, and then we'll move on to our regular meeting. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on Community Television Channel 25 and streaming on the city's website at cityofSantaCruz.com. Jennifer Cameron is our technician this afternoon and evening, and I'd like to thank her again for her work. All city council members can be emailed at citycouncil@cityofSantaCruz.com. If you'd like to communicate with us about an agenda item, we'd like to receive your email by Monday at 5:00 p.m. before our council meeting. By sending it then, it will provide us with an opportunity to review your email and include it with the rest of our agenda packet. Please bear in mind that all items of correspondence with the city and city council constitute public records and are generally subject to disclosure upon request by any member of the public. Accordingly, if you have sensitive or private information that you do not wish to be made public, you should not include that information in your correspondence. Our rules of decorum are on the window ledge to my left. It's my job to keep the meeting running without disruption, and we ask that you respect your fellow citizens, whether you are inside or outside of the chambers during the meeting. At this point, I'd like to ask any council members if there are any statements of disqualification. Doesn't look like any. And clerk, are there any additions or deletions?
No, there aren't.
Okay. So in regards to oral communications, some of you may have seen that there's going to be a break at 4:30 for a closed-session item. We will have our regular oral communications at 5:30. And oral communications is an opportunity for members of the community to speak to us on any items that are not on today's agenda. Oral communications generally occur at the conclusion or afternoon of business at around 5:30 p.m., but may occur before that time. Please note, council members, again, will be adjourning the regular session at 4:30 p.m. for the closed session, and will come back at 5:30 from closed session to hear oral communications. Now, I'd like to ask the city attorney if there's any report out on the closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Terasas, members of the city council. This afternoon's very brief closed session began at 1:45 in the Courtyard Conference Room with one category of business to discuss, and that was liability claims. The claims of Irene Bush, James E. Lewis, and Harlan D. Graves. And those claims are also listed as Agenda Item 9 on your consent agenda. And there was no reportable action.
Thank you. And is there a report from the city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First, I wanted to let the council know that Electrify America, who announced its next $200 million investment in zero-emissions vehicle infrastructure in California, they've, according to their plan, the Santa Cruz-Watsonville metro area, will see up to three DC fast chargers installed along our corridor here, as well as other investments. And the result of this is because of the city's effort to submit two proposals on behalf of a local team here. And so we're very pleased that they're going to be investing in the city or in the region. And of course, this helps to support our climate action milestones, one of which is to reduce the number of, or carbon emissions from vehicles by 20%. And so obviously, this is a good thing for the city to receive this amount of funding. And then, secondly, I wanted to just turn it over to Bonnie, who's going to introduce Chip and the new Downtown Ambassador program, so you get to meet some of the new folks on this new program.
Thank you, Martine. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. I just briefly want to, you all know Chip, so I don't need to introduce Chip. But I briefly just wanted to provide a little bit of context to the Downtown Ambassadors, because a lot of this work has been happening through the Downtown Management Corporation. And so I just wanted to provide a little bit of context. Many of you will remember the Host Program that we used to have for many years in the downtown. That program was jointly run by the city through the Downtown Management Corporation and a much-beloved Gina Ramirez, who retired from running the business. In fact, we actually helped her set up her first business to run that for a number of years. After she left, we looked at alternatives downtown to continue sort of that Host Program. There are a number of organizations, businesses are out there. But for the funding that we had available, we couldn't actually make it work. So we started a pilot program with the Rangers, really putting on the Rangers a lot, which was to do the Host services as well as some of the enforcement downtown. So we tried that for two years. I think they did a really good job. But as the DMC Board, we decided that we really wanted to bring back an element that was really focused on customer service, providing a friendly downtown experience back to the downtown. And so through the Downtown Management Corporation, we now have and are presenting to you today the Downtown Ambassadors. And so this is a sort of a joint program. It's actually, will be administered by the Downtown Management Corporation, but it's a contract with the Downtown Association. downtown association. And so that's how we're actually able to financially make this work. But it is a joint program, and I just wanted to assure you that the downtown Rangers will continue in the downtown. So this will be a whole team effort, including the downtown outreach workers as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Chip.
Thank you, Bonnie. Good afternoon, Mayor Trazas, city council members. I am Chip. I'm the executive of the downtown association. And Bonnie covered a bit. We're going to go through a really quick presentation and give you an update on our ambassador program that we launched a week ago yesterday in the downtown. And we can go ahead and, and this is, as Bonnie mentioned, it really is a partnership in every sense of the word. It's a partnership with the city of Santa Cruz, the downtown association, and the downtown management corporation. And this is our mission. This is important. I want you guys to know this. It's our mission, for the program's mission is to be the best part of people's day in downtown Santa Cruz. And Sonia, who I'm going to introduce in a moment, is going to talk about how we're doing that. Go ahead. And Bonnie covered a bit of this, but we were able to launch this quarter with some support from the economic development department. Beginning January 1st of 2019, the program will be funded by an existing assessment of property through the downtown management corporation. And many costs, there, there is some leverage for some cost in overhead, since the downtown association is running the, the program and shared staffing and shared office space and some other, some other costs that we're able to minimize. Thank you. So our goals, among our goals, we're, we're hoping to improve the perceived public experience of downtown Santa Cruz, add value and perceived value to the district, and improve the support and responsiveness to the businesses, or the perceived support and responsiveness to the businesses, and also strengthen the downtown community. I'm going into a little bit of how we're achieving those goals, but I want to introduce our director of operations, who's managing the day-to-day of this program and who I believe you all know, Sonia Brenner.
Good afternoon, council members. Sonia Brenner, Director of Operations with the downtown association. And it's my pleasure to introduce two of our five ambassadors, Meg Valama and Michelle Otanis. These are both of our full-time ambassadors. So each of them working the Sunday through Wednesday and then the other half of the week. And basically, just to give you an overview of the program, the ambassadors will be proactively looking for visitors who might need assistance, whether it's finding change, where's the change machine, or whatever it is they're looking for, specific place or directions to the beach. Proactively communicating with downtown businesses and their staff. A lot of businesses have already found them very helpful. Identify, report, and resolve vandalism, graffiti, waste, debris, and cleanliness issues. So just kind of doing their part also to pick, pick up trash, light trash that's on the ground, and do public safety reporting. Also to observe and report criminal behavior and any other public safety issues. They will liaison with the relevant city staff and other downtown partners, such as Uncle Poop, and the kiosk staff, and the Rangers, the police, the park workers, the outreach worker, the homeless outreach worker, and so on. They will also track reoccurring issues and work with partners to problem solve, and continually look for new ways on how to help improve each block. And if you have any questions for them, I think afterwards, we will open that. That's my nutshell.
And I want to also let you guys know about a community app we launched in concurrent with launching this program. We, we founded this app, which we initially researched for the ambassadors to keep track of the activity they're doing on the street. And then we've made the app available to the business community downtown and residents and anybody else who would like to use it. It's a great app that the downtown community can use to contact the ambassadors. We also have buttons to reach the Rangers, the emergency dispatch and non-emergency, the homeless outreach. It's a great way, so you don't have to keep track of all those numbers or who to call. It's right there. It's also linked to the city's new reporting app, the CRIS app. And it also gives people the ability to report downtown-specific issues. I'll give you a quick couple of examples of things we've already gotten this week. And there's a post from one of our downtown businesses who is very excited. I have to say, going back to the, the partnership of this, all of the things that Sonia listed that the ambassadors are doing, obviously, they're not doing on their own, and we can't do without the city's support. And the responsiveness of the city's staff already this week has been outstanding, extraordinary. This was, a business reported this cobwebs on the lamppost, which is something not a lot of people look up. So you don't always see that. And Rich Smith from the city was out there the next day and cleaned them up, and we're getting the block cleaned up. So we've gotten a number of, this was day one of the program. We got a report of some trash in an alley behind Santa Cruz. And that was reported, I, towards the end of the day on October 1st, and on my, I took the second picture on my way into work. And I didn't come in that late. So it's, the response has been really wonderful and very quickly, quick. So happy to answer questions. We're very excited about the program and having the extra presence downtown to just support the community in downtown. And happy to answer any questions for, for any of us.
Any questions? Sandy?
Sandy? Thank you for the presentation. I, if you don't mind, I wouldn't, I'd like to hear from the ambassadors, those who are actually getting out on the street, just to, your thought, your initial thoughts on the experience.
Well, good afternoon. I'm Michelle Otanis, and I want to say thank you. I'm thrilled about this new program. It is a whole new world for me, and I'm loving every minute of it. Being out there, helping the people, cleaning up, just being there in a good presence. A smile can change around someone's day. And I'm just enjoying it, learning a lot. And again, I'm grateful. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Meg, and also, thank you very much for having us here. I would have to say what I think of what we do each day is see a need, fill a need, across the board, from businesses to interacting with some of the homeless that are out there, and just bringing a smile to people's face in any way we know.
All right. Chris?
I'm really excited you're here, too. I heard a lot about the downtown hosts, and people missed it. And it's going to be all totally different, but you know, it's going to really be helpful. Meg, quick question, put you on the spot here. Undergrad from New York arrives, looking around, comes over to you and goes, he's from, he's from the city, he's from Brooklyn, actually. And he says, so you only get one, one shot at this. Where, where's the best place to get pizza?
Snackless.
In downtown.
The best place to get pizza?
Yeah, what do you say?
To a New Yorker.
I would probably send you over to Joe's.
Thank you.
I love it.
You should turn it back on him and ask. All right. I'll just have to say if there's any other comments or questions. But for me, Councilmember Matthews.
I will just say, as a member of the Downtown Management Corporation Board with Rochelle, this to me has been a really positive part of the ongoing evolution of the downtown host in its many iterations program. It is funded by an assessment on property owners. It's important that it be responsive to the interests of the property owners and by extension, the businesses downtown. And I've served on a whole lot of boards in my day, and it's really, it's a pleasure to serve on a board that's constructive and does its critical thinking and looks of ways to continually improve the services that they provide. And we are excited about this new partnership, this new contract. So that's the report. It was a, a great discussion at the board level and one that has been unanimously embraced.
I think it's really important for people to understand that we are not, you know, you're not out there to take the place of the police officers and the Rangers that are patrolling, because that was the question a lot of people came to me and asked and said, well, wait a minute, you're, you know, you're not replacing our, our police presence with downtown ambassadors. And I said, absolutely not. That's not the case. You are performing a function that is much different than what law enforcement is performing. And I think it's really important the community know that.
Thank you for bringing that up. If I can just add on to that, I think this program really can't be successful without all of the other resources that are in place. The Rangers do a tremendous job of enforcement, and we're really looking forward to working more closely with them and helping not only the enforcement, but the homeless outreach workers, the sidewalk cleaners, and everybody who is working downtown, helping to, to be more, more efficient, because we have eyes and ears and we can really help, help everyone who's working. But we can't do it without any of the existing resources that, that the city provides and the other agencies provide.
And I'm just curious, have you had your ambassadors out at a time when you, were you out there when UC Santa Cruz came back into session this year? That would have been like?
UCSC?
The first weekend or the last weekend in September or?
Into when UCSCs came in?
I was just curious, because I was curious if you noticed an uptick in the number of people needing your assistance and asking questions, if we've had that experience yet with the students? Or if you get questions from the students?
It's starting out. They're good. Well, I'm putting you on the.
Okay, yes, you are. Well, I believe there is a more, a lot more UCSC students out there. For instance, this morning, there was a group of, um, four out of the five were smoking. And I had to kindly ask them, you know, to put it out and please take their butts with them. And just then Chip was with me and we engaged on where they're from and, you know, welcomed them to have a happy day and welcomed them here. And just, it ended up peacefully. They were sorry. They didn't know. So it was just a matter of just common courtesy and just, you know, instructing it. So, you know, make the rules aware.
Great. Okay, I'd just like to say, it's, it's wonderful to see you downtown as often as I do. I mean, having the visibility. And so not just the friendly smiles, but also the additional eyes on the street to see when there's things that need help or how we connect the city to make sure that we're keeping it, you know, clean and vibrant downtown. It really makes a difference. I, I get copied on those see, click, fix notices. And it's really nice to see that, you know, the responsiveness that happens when, when those reports are made. So I really want to thank you, and I look forward to seeing you downtown.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I wanted to add that they will be out there. The program is seven days a week, Monday through Sunday, and 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM are the hours that they are out on Pacific Avenue and the side streets from Laurel Street to Water Street. And we have lots more information on our website, downtownsanta cruz dot com slash ambassadors.
It's easy to download. I just did.
Great.
Hey, thanks, thanks Sonia, Chip. And, and again, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. In closing, let me just, just say, the, the program's a week old, and we really want feedback. We want to make this really work. So get to know the ambassadors, get to know the, the, the program, and shameless plug, they will all be at the downtown party this Friday at 6:00 PM. If you want to come by, there are some, still some tickets. We're having a really fun, our second annual downtown party. So you can come, talk to the ambassadors then. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
Do we get pie now? Is that?
Come back, come back, come back. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, first up is, there's no comment on the presentation, but I mean.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to note that the University of California Law School Public Clinic released a 46-page study.
Sir, you're out of order. Hey, I need you to sit down, sir.
Alleging that business improvement districts in California, including those in San Francisco, habitually harass the homeless. The study also suggests that the BID political spending violates state law.
Okay, I turned the mic.
This is a, September 19th article in the San Francisco Weekly.
Thank you.
But there's.
First up is the consent agenda. These are items three through 13 on our agenda. All items will be acted upon in one motion unless an item is pulled from a council member, by a council member for further discussion. Are there any council members who wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Councilmember Brown?
Well, I just have a comment on item eight, and I'd like to pull item 13 for brief conversation.
13. Councilmember Matthews?
I would actually like to pull eight for a rather minor comment and adjustment, hopefully, and have a brief comment on 10. Doesn't need to be pulled.
10. Yeah, I was going to make a comment on 10. Right. Okay, so eight, you have the comment, so we're going to pull it anyways. And so we'll have that. Councilmember Crone?
Just a, a comment on six and a question on 10.
Okay, do you want a, a question, or we're just going to have comments? Would you like 10 polled for that question? Is it a comment or, I mean?
It's more, you know, wanting to know where the fire truck is going. Who's, what happens to it? The old fire truck.
Okay, I'm going to pull, I think I'm going to pull 10 for the question, just so we do that, and then also cover it. So the items that have been polled are eight, 10, and 13, with a comment on item six. And that was a, the comment on six. Is that correct? Who had the comment on six? Yeah. Okay. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to any item on the agenda with the consent agenda, with the exception of eight, 10, or 13? Anyone? Six is a, just a comment. Eight, 10, or 13? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to, to the council. Or a motion?
Motion to approve everything except eight, 10, and 13. Second.
That's a motion by Councilmember Naroyan, second by Councilmember Brown. Any further discussion now, before we do the vote? You had a comment on six?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, this is part of the continued extortion from cell phone companies, and we fought it off one time before. It's called the Streamline Act. I call it the Steamroller Act, because it's steamrolled, trying to steamroller over cities' rights. And I appreciate the mayor putting this on. I appreciate the League of Cities bringing it to our attention. And let's keep up the good fight.
All right, great. Okay, so we have a motion, a sec.
I just have to say, I could not agree more. I just had to put that in, because I find this so offensive.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we have a, a motion by Councilmember Naroyan, second by Councilmember Brown. This is a consent agenda, with the exception of items eight, 10, and 13. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Chase absent. So now we'll start with item number eight. And Councilmember Matthews, you had the question on this.
Yes, I really appreciate the work of the Council Ad Hoc Budget Committee and the brief report that they submitted. I did notice that one component remains to be brought back to us, the budgetary policy and principles for 2020. And we are, I talked with the finance director about this. That's to come back to us. It's, it's pretty well-formed already, is to come back to us in November. But I did want to add, include in the motion, just to be specific, and I should say also, I understand that the budget principles do include the assumption of forecasting. But I would like to add, in addition to the motion as it's presented, that we request that the budgetary policy and principles for 2020, which are still to be completed, include specific consideration of contract negotiations in the coming year.
That makes sense.
It's a very simple addition.
Yeah, sure.
I'll second. Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Matthews, second by Vice Mayor Watkins. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this item? This is the Council Ad Hoc Budget Committee. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for further direction. We have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Matthews and Vice Mayor Watkins, and you also had a comment.
I just have a quick comment. So I appreciate getting this, the final report here, and we will be getting the, the principles for, I guess, our November agenda, so that's good. I just wanted to say that, you know, being involved in this process was really gratifying for me, because I think that we did, you know, we did a lot of work in the subcommittee and with staff to try to streamline the process. And I think that worked really well. So I'm looking forward to continuing to do that. And I noticed that the agenda report came from staff, but I just wanted to say that I know in our, our conversations in the subcommittee, we were very much supportive of moving this forward, so that our names weren't officially on the agenda report, but we had all decided that this was a really great way to move forward. So just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thanks for, everyone for your work.
Hi, Marcus Pimentel, your finance director. And that report is, is from the Budget Act Committee. I'll take care of that. It was just when we were getting into the system. But what I really wanted to say is I really commend the committee. They did some amazing work in a very short period of time. A lot of work, a lot of lifting, a lot of community outreach, a lot of real thoughtfulness. And I'm really proud of, of the product of it. And I appreciate all the work on the budgetary principles. And they're almost, I mean, I think they're effectively ready to go, and be happy to bring those back to you.
Yeah, I'll say that I was really happy to, to work together with Vice Mayor Watkins and Councilmember Brown. I thought it was great. It started a new process in terms of community engagement on the budget, and then also getting some external reports from outside, you know, agencies to look at what, how we're benchmarking against them, in terms of where we are in terms of staffing, where we are on budget costs. It was really helpful, I think, to kind of do those comparisons. And I hope those continue. I mean, I hope we start to even look at how the group that helped us last time maybe is engaged and expanded, or have some new, new people involved as well to provide different perspectives.
And thank you, I just remembered, as you mentioned it. That was, I think, one of the most exciting elements of the process, was having a focus group where we invited people from the community to participate in some discussion at the front end. And I hope that those of you in the audience and others listening follow us and want to perhaps get involved in future focus groups, because I think that is really important, outside look at the budget for us.
I'll just briefly say thank you so much. Also, it was, it was a great experience, and I appreciated the process. And I also just really want to acknowledge Marcus and his staff and Tracy for all their work. It was a really busy time, and really pulling this together in a really comprehensive way was, was really beneficial to all of us, I'd say. So thank you, and I look forward to continuing it next year.
And if, Councilmember Matthews, you restate that motion, please, while you're getting that. getting that. Councilmember Crone?
Just a question, when is the person going to be appointed to this subcommittee?
Ah, next week, Monday.
Thank you.
I'll read the whole thing. It's just one addition to the existing motion. Motion to form a FY 2020 City Council Ad Hoc Budget Committee, appoint prior committee members, Vice Mayor Watkins and Councilmember Brown with one additional mayor appointee, receive a report on FY 2019 Ad Hoc Budget Committee, and request that the budgetary policy and principles for 2020, still to be completed, include specific consideration of contract negotiations in the coming year.
Okay, is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
And that's, you seconded that motion by Vice Mayor Watkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Okay, next up is item...
With Councilmember Chase absent.
With Councilmember Chase absent, thank you. The next item is item number 10. And really, this was, you had a question, Councilmember Crone, but before you do that, I was going to just be prepared to make a comment and say how timely it was to have this particular item come before us, to have new resources in the field to address our fire danger. And so, I think that having it before us now as a consent items was something where it was very routine, but it warranted maybe if you had some additional comments you wanted to make about how this resource will help us and address Councilmember Crone's question on where the vehicle would be located. Was that the question?
No, where the old vehicle is going.
Where the old vehicle will be going, it's part of your just brief response.
Yeah, the old vehicle will be surplus. We don't have current capacity within our existing stations to keep that number of vehicles and it's outlived its useful lifespan. It's 17 years old, it's two-wheel drive, it doesn't have the modern equipment and safety features on it as far as suspension, seat belts, and the pumping. It's a really unique piece of equipment in the sense that it's a short wheelbase, it's four-wheel drive, and unlike our other engines that once you get to a place where we need to pump water, you have to divert the power from the motor to the pump. These Type III engines have the ability to what we call pump and roll. And so, in an area like Pogonip or in Ronnigulch or grassy field, you can actually drive while someone is following with a hose line and putting water on a grass fire. And so, it's a mobile, what we call mobile attack. And in a lot of our areas in Pogonip and Ronnigulch and DeLaviega, we can't get our larger engines into those areas as readily or as safely. So, we're really appreciative that Measure S has finally come to fruition. I believe that this is the first funds that have been used for Measure S for something for the city. We're really looking forward to it. We were able to tag on to other purchases that were being made in the U.S. as well as purchases within the counties. So, there's a number of our adjoining agencies that are purchasing the same model, the same equipment. And so, we have that interoperability when we receive mutual aid and give mutual aid.
Great.
The money is coming out of the general fund, just to make that clear, yeah. And just a side question, the Mission Hill fire, would you have been able to use a truck like this for that? Would that have been any useful?
Absolutely. That area, we didn't need to use it for that, but for that area to access along the railroad tracks, that type of equipment is a much better piece of equipment than what we currently have in what we call our Type I engines, which is what you see driving around normally.
Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews.
Well, not only is wildland fire response at the top of everyone's minds these days, but I did want to comment also that this is a result of Measure S. People say, what are we getting for our core cent sales tax increase? And we promised the public that this would be in that first package and it is. So, I hope there's a big splash when it arrives. I know that's about a 10-month wait, something like that.
Yeah, it's going to be ordered. Once we order it, it has to be built. There'll be a number of site visits. We expect it to be in use next fire season, which is kind of a relative term with what we've had in California. Fire season used to be a few months and now it's kind of spread out over a calendar year.
Thank you. And also, just wanted to say, as we brought Measure S forward as a supplement to the general fund, this is a capital expenditure. It doesn't all go to operating and I think this highlights the need to reinvest in our capital resources. And I think the Fire Department had been asking this for four years or so. It was outdated. And finally, it's a half a million dollar product, basically. So, we're fortunate to be able to take that Measure S money and really invest in something important to the community.
Yeah, thank you. I greatly appreciate it. Like you said, it's a big investment and it'll get put to good use.
Councilmember Naroyan.
And I just want to say, before I was on council, I was on Public Works and Transportation Commission for six years. And I think I've heard about this fire truck every one of those six years I was on the commission before being elected to council. So, I'm really glad that we're here today talking about the acquisition of this really important piece of equipment. And I have to say, those fires on Mission Hill have been very close to my home. One evening, opening the front door and seeing flames and a fire truck in front of my house was very unnerving. And so, I'm really happy that this piece of equipment is here. And I just have to say, the effort that I've seen the Fire Department in chasing after what's been going on around town with all of these little fires has been pretty amazing. Guys have been doing great work keeping the public safe, so thank you.
Councilmember Crone?
Since everyone's commenting cheerfully about this acquisition, I'll just chime in. I am really pleased that this is happening. It's one of the first things I heard about when I did a ride-along early on during this term on the council. And I remember Chief Frally at the time suggesting that this is a resource that can also be shared with other fire jurisdictions that maybe don't have access to this kind of equipment. And so, you know, the benefits will be regional, really. And in addition, that we may recoup some of the cost of the investment through that.
Yeah, and so what you're seeing is not just a regional approach with our neighbors. We have the same equipment, so we have that interoperability. It's also part of the Master Mutual Aid Plan that we have within California. And just last night, we had a strike team come back from out of county that was part of the Office of Emergency Services where because of the high flag or the high wind, red flag danger, they pre-positioned resources in Contra Costa County and that team actually responded to the fire that was south of Travis Air Force Base, which made our air quality so poor. So, we're part of that plan. We receive the aid when we need it, we give it when we can. And yeah, it's very much a regional resource.
All right, thank you. So, at this point, I'd like to ask if there's any members of the public that would like to speak to this item. This is item number 10. It's the wildland fire engine purchase. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Council Vicemayor Watkins?
I'll just move the recommendation and sort of echo the comments that were previously made. Thank you for making our community safe in terms of what we know is coming and all the risks that we have. And it's nice to see our Measure S dollars go to this cause, so thank you.
I'll second that. Yeah, I think this is something that's extremely important and timely that we have it and I'm really excited that it's happening. So, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously with Councilmember Chase absent. So, the next item on the agenda is item number 13. This is the professional services contract for AquaFire Storage and Recovery. So, there was a question, I think?
Well, I want to, I guess I want to preface that with a comment. So, this is an item that is, you know, we're being asked to approve another service, another consultant service contract. But I think it's worth noting that it's, and this item is actually much more important than simply approving that contract. And, you know, I think that it's just worth noting because a lot of this work happens, almost all of it, behind the scenes. We, as council members, are unable to digest all of the material that, you know, and the technical work that is done. But we obviously have great faith in the Water Department and our Water Commission to have, take a closer look at that. So, I just wanted to say that and, you know, just remind us that this AquaFire Storage and Recovery project is one of the four potential water supply projects that could fill our existing water demand gap. And finding that the project may be feasible based on the Phase I work and moving on to Phase II is kind of an important achievement. I just want to say that. So, thank you for all of the work that you and your staff do. And it also raises a question for me because I know the Water Commission is generally, you know, they focus more on this. And, you know, so I just wanted to raise a question and maybe not for discussion today, but just ask the council to consider what kind of role we want our Water Commission to play. And I, because I kind of feel like we don't hear a lot directly from them. We have our annual meeting, but we don't really engage with them short of, you know, individual commissioners that we may know or if they reach out to us. I certainly don't follow all of the agendas and come to all the meetings. But I just think it's something that is worth thinking about and perhaps revisiting at some time in the future. And so, I just want to say, this is really, it's a big deal. So, let's be happy to be moving on to Phase II.
Could I just add a couple of comments there? So, the Councilmember Brown is totally right. This is a, it's a big sort of watershed moment for us to move forward into looking at actually putting water from available supplies that will be, you know, surface water supplies, putting that into the ground. It's one of the key items that is, we're evaluating as part of the Water Supply Advisory Committee recommendations that we'll be coming back to council for some kind of a discussion and hopefully decision on supplemental supply in 2020, so it's not too far away. The other really important part of this same kind of strategy is this is the year we're probably going to do water transfers with the SoCal Creek Water District as part of looking at that in lieu service as a potential opportunity to, again, do a regional strategy for conjunctive use of surface water and groundwater. So, we've done a lot of studies and a lot of work to get here and now we're going to see if it really works. So, it's pretty exciting and we're pretty enthusiastic about moving forward with this step. We're still looking for a site to do this in the Santa Margarita Basin. And Councilmember Brown is also correct, we had a very thorough discussion of this at the Water Commission last Monday night. And the report was already in process and, but we were, the Water Commission did take an action to recommend the approval of this to you very specifically, but the report was already down the pipeline, so it wasn't able, we weren't able to change it. But I'm glad to have the opportunity to pass on that recommendation.
Are there any other questions?
I just wanted to support, add to what Councilmember Brown said. I do think this, the Phase I analysis moving to Phase II is quite an accomplishment and I'm really happy this is one of our four sources of water, right? So, moving forward, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this item? This is item number 13 regarding the professional services contract for AquaFire Storage and Recovery Pilot Test Program. I'd like to bring it back to council for action. Councilmember Matthews?
I'm happy to go ahead and move the recommendation and just express thanks to both the Water Department staff and the Commission, whose all the background work on this is so thorough and the Commission does do exceptional work in vetting, discussing these issues before they come to us.
Okay, sir, a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews and Councilmember Brown with a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Chase absent. Okay, this brings us up to the next item on the agenda, which are public hearings. The first item is our 2018 Engineering and Traffic Survey and this is James Burr, the Transportation Manager.
Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about the item number 14, the 2018 Engineering and Traffic Survey. I have both a resolution and a ordinance change in front of you today. The resolution would certify the 2018 survey and the ordinance would back it up and also reduce the speeds on three streets, street segments. That's Delaware Avenue, Isbell, and Western Drive. The Engineering Traffic Survey is a document required by the California Vehicle Code to establish and post speed limits on streets. It also provides a legal backing to use radar enforcement on those same streets. This action was heard and approved at the September 17th meeting of the Transportation Public Works Commission. And if approved today, staff will publish the document and then provide it to law enforcement, of course, and then the Santa Cruz County Law Library and the Superior Court Traffic Division. The survey would be valid for seven years and would replace the last one that was done in 2011. Again, the only change between the last one and this next one is, are the three streets that would be reduced to 25 miles an hour. The streets that are included in the survey are mapped, and that's part of your packet, on the California Road Systems map. They define which streets we have to survey. And it's basically because of the Vehicle Code Speed Trap Language. They refer to the map in your packet and any street on that map must have an ETS or you cannot use radar for enforcement. To ensure uniformity in how these streets are posted, when we post, when we go out and post speed limits, we typically use the 85 percentile survey mode. Almost every state in the nation and every city in every state uses that methodology. You basically go out and survey 100 cars. The 85th fastest car is the 85th percentile and then you try to set the speed within five miles an hour of that speed. You are allowed two reductions. You're allowed to round down if it's mathematically correct. So, if somebody, if a street is surveyed at 32 miles an hour, you could round down to 30. And then you're allowed one more reduction by five miles an hour. Almost every street, we were able to keep at 25. That was at 25. Again, the only changes were the three streets that were currently at 30 were reducing back to 25. The one other difference this time is that we added about 30 streets to the survey, all of them at 25, just because the mapping seemed expanded this year. And so, we met with PD and any street they thought they could use radar enforcement on, we went ahead and surveyed. This reflects hundreds of hours of staff time. We've been working on it for almost a year and a half because you have to go out at non-peak times and survey, try to survey 100 cars or at least 50 or 60 or however many you can get. And then log all that and bring it back. And we, of course, clean it up and put it in Excel and then eventually we'll publish. I think that's about it. I'm available for questions.
Any questions on the side?
I actually do have one.
Okay, good. We'll start. Councilmember Crone and Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you. Thank you for responding to the email, too. I was just wondering, when you said 100 cars, but you don't survey 100 cars, you only do 50 or 60? You gave an example of the 85th percentile, the 85th car, and so you just take it, the math back, if you only can get 60 cars?
Correct.
And is there no street where we have it above 30 in our city?
Above 30 miles an hour posted limit?
30 miles an hour.
Non-state highway?
Right.
There are none.
There are none. And would, I think that neighbors would probably be happy this goes back to 25 in these, on these streets.
These are great locations for that, yeah. Councilmember Matthews?
Well, I can just remember so many times people say, please reduce the speed limit, and then we have to explain the 85th percentile and all the legal constraints, et cetera, for enforcement. So, I'm delighted we're actually going down. How did that happen?
Well, if you look at the speeds across years of the surveys, and we have them going back for, I don't know, 30 years, they used to be done every five years. The speeds actually on streets are pretty darn consistent. But if you get even a slight variation, like these three streets went from either 33, where I had to round up, to 32. And so, I could round down and then reduce by five. It's just a slight variance.
Welcome news to people.
Very, yeah.
Yes, so, thank you. And just the fact that you, the department proactively went out and measured a whole lot more streets that weren't required, that's very responsive to community concerns without making a big fanfare out of it. So, good, good for you.
Yeah, Councilmember Naroyan?
I just wanted to make a comment. I unfortunately became really familiar with how speeds are set when I worked for the state legislature and just want to say thank you for your work in this because it's incredibly dense and detailed, the regulations that we have to follow that the state has. And they do this because I guess towns were notorious for having speed traps and that being a great way to raise revenue for their city. So, thank you for hanging in there and thanks for doing the survey so we could actually do radar enforcement of speed limits along what have become Speedway, well, have always been speedways. Western Drive, I grew up right off of Western Drive and even when it was like off-roading because the road was in such a bad condition back in the 70s and 80s, people still drove pretty fast. So, thanks for working through all the dense state regulation on this.
I couldn't agree more. I mean, having it go down is a really big deal and I think it's thankful. I mean, it gives the... I mean, it gives the, the Santa Cruz Police Department some more opportunities. I just wanted to ask the Public Works if there's ways, when we look at areas where there's been high accident rates, or there's issues of, you know, traffic safety, whether there's any discretion to incorporate that into your review of speed limits?
There is discretion for high accident rates. However, I didn't need to use that. Again, the reason I included so much documentation with the staff report today is because there's very little wiggle room when setting speeds, and especially in reducing speeds. So in, in every case possible, I was able to bring it back to 25 without using the collision history. That's not, that wasn't really necessary. So you can reduce it for other reasons, bicycle safety and residential density, and there's a variety of reasons even without the collisions. And that was performed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item? This is item number 14, the 2018 Engineering and Traffic Survey. Any members of the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Councilmember Matthews?
I'd like to move approval.
Okay, I'll give it to Vice Mayor Watkins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously with Councilmember Chase absent. Okay, the next item is item number 15. This is a public hearing regarding the second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 2018-13, amended in sections of Title 24 of the Santa Cruz Municipal Code. This is Carol Berg from the Housing and Community Development Manager. She's up on this item for a presentation. Or Lee Butler, Director of Planning.
Good afternoon, Council. Lee Butler, Planning Director. And we don't have a formal presentation for you this afternoon. This is the second reading. Last week, we spoke, or excuse me, two weeks ago, we spoke about a series of proposed changes, most notably the changes to the mapped rentals and the, so requiring inclusionary for rental units during the portion of time when, or excuse me, for sale units during the portion of time when they're rented. Also, there were some changes to the inclusionary percentage for rental units outside of the downtown, going from 15% to 10%. And then some changes to some formulas, for example, looking at 35% of household income as the threshold for using the, for setting the rent levels rather than 40% where we're currently at. So there were a series of changes, a very robust discussion, and we're available for any questions that you may have.
All right, before we go into questions, I'd like to first ask if there's any members of the public that would like to speak to this item. This is item 15. It's the second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 2018-13, amending Title 24 of the municipal code. Any members of the public? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for further questions, discussion, and action. Anyone? Councilmember Crown?
Yeah, I just, I didn't realize there's a, is there a difference? This, we had the email about the downtown. What does it make's downtown? And downtown development area is different than downtown, or that's downtown? And how was that like determined? Because I might have missed this. I missed it in our discussion last time, but I just, I've been asked by a few people because you see that big, huge River Street sign that some of us love, and says down, welcome to downtown Santa Cruz, you know? So some of my undergraduate and their families think that that's where downtown Santa Cruz is, right there, that it's River Street. But how did this, how did those streets happen that it's, that that's what downtown is?
Sure, so I'll start by just identifying the downtown area. It's bounded by Water Street to the north, San Lorenzo River to the east, Laurel Street to the south, and Cedar Street to the west. And really, that distinction came about as part of the pro-form analysis. That's an area where higher intensity uses are, are promoted through our downtown plan. And so that is an area where, because of the densities and because of the ability to use the state density bonus to the benefit of those projects, both in terms, in large part in terms of the parking reductions, but also in that those densities will also require structured parking versus outside of that area. The densities will oftentimes mean that surface parking options will be used in lieu of the structured parking. So really, it's just a function of the densities. In that area, there are higher densities, and that has an alternative pro-form analysis. And so that was where it was separated out, those densities versus outside of those areas.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
But I'm just, there's no historic sort of thing about what downtown is. How did those streets get to be chosen over other, extending it farther or shrinking it? I just was wondering if there's any history here on past planning commissions or planning departments using downtown as fungible?
So I would definitely say that people have a different idea of downtown. And, and even, you know, Cedar Street to the west, some would say that it extends further, and some would say that it extends further north. I think for purposes of this, it's just where the development intensities are the greatest in terms of the potential for development intensities. And, you know, at some point in the future, that, that may be considered as, as we continue to grow, looking at areas further north, as you mentioned, on River Street, or further south. And right now, we have the Beach and South of Laurel Area Plan, and that is separate from our downtown area plan. But at some point, you know, there, there may be opportunities to look at how those two interact together in promoting higher densities in those areas that are close to transit and services and jobs.
Because someone remarked, sent me an email and said that the arena for them is downtown. That would make sense to put the arena in downtown.
The Warriors Stadium.
Any questions on the side? Okay, Councilmember Matthews?
I think a number of us may want to ask a question about correspondence we received claiming that the, this action would violate Measure O, it would reduce a legally binding 15% mandated affordable housing requirement, et cetera. And I did ask the city attorney to explain how this action would not violate what's on, on the books already.
Yes, thank you. Just so we're all on the same page, Measure O was adopted in 1979, and it addressed a bunch of, several different topics, one of which was affordable housing, and it states it shall be the policy of the City of Santa Cruz that at least 15% of those housing units newly constructed for sale or rental each year shall be capable of purchase or rental by persons with average or below average incomes. And historically, this has been, and the county of Santa Cruz also has a similar requirement applicable in the county. Historically, this has always been interpreted as 15% of the total number of housing units constructed, not 15% of those constructed on each parcel. And I think in the staff report that you received at the last meeting, there was a discussion of the, the number of affordable units constructed in the city over the past 10 years or so relative to the number of market rate units, and the 15% was, was easily exceeded. So that's how it's been interpreted.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further comments or action?
Well, I'll move the rec, I mean, I'll, I'll move the second reading of the ordinance. And I appreciated Kaiser Marston coming and doing a presentation and helping us understand all of the history and all the work on this. And I know it's really complicated and, and thick, and a lot of conversation ensued, and so, but I'm happy to move the second reading at this time.
I'll sec.
Arm hissle for.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews with a second. Vice Mayor Watkins and, and Councilmember Matthews with a second. Councilmember Brown?
Just, I think I've been pretty clear and expansive in my comments about this particular issue, so I'm going to make it brief. I do want to really thank staff for all of the work that you've done to bring us some changes that I do think will likely lead to additional affordable housing development in the city. I really appreciate that, and your responsiveness to concerns, answering questions. I know this has been a long process. Lamentably, I'm, will be voting no. Were it not for the change, the motion that was made to, to increase the percentage income for affordability purposes for, for rents, and the potential grandfathering of many multi-unit structures that do not have open application, planning applications, I might be able to support it. But given those concerns, I will be voting no.
Thank you. Councilmember Naroyan?
I just want to express, I had the same distress, voting for something that lowers the inclusionary rate. You know, I really teetered on that, but I think the financial report, you know, by the consultant just tipped me over into seeing, I guess, the reality of the situation. I hope, I would love to be proven wrong, that, that inclusionary rate doesn't have to be set down to 10%. And I would in a heartbeat raise it to 15, but yeah, I was really torn on that as well.
We have a motion by Council, Vice, go ahead, Councilmember Brown?
I just want to clarify. I thank you for that. I actually could have supported the 10%. It was the increase in the, the income, percentage of income to be spent on housing and the potential grandfathering of units so that even the 10 and 15% in the downtown may not apply for projects that are coming our way. So, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Motion by Vice Mayor Watkins, second by Councilmember Matthews. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any opposed? That, that passes with Councilmember Crown, Councilmember Brown saying no, Councilmember Matthews, Councilmember Naroyan, Vice Mayor Watkins, and myself, yes, and Councilmember Chase absent. The next item on the agenda is item number 16. This is the resolution adopting the 2018 through 2023 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan and Climate Adaptation Plan Update. We're starting to get up into the big numbers of years, it seems like, 2023. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Tiffany Wise-West, Sustainability and Climate Action Manager, for a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Give me just a moment to bring up this presentation.
Thank you for the binder and all the materials you provided in advance.
You are quite welcome.
All right.
We'd actually like to start out with some comments from the Emergency Operations Manager, Paul Horvath, on the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan to start.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Council. Paul Horvath, Santa Cruz Fire Department Emergency Operations Center Manager. Just would like to provide you with a quick update of what we're doing today. We're adopting the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. This is the third update of our Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, which started back in 2008. Public Works assisted with this update, and they were very helpful. The Local Hazard Mitigation Plan is a plan where we go through the entire city and we analyze the risks that we, that we face, mostly with our infrastructure. We're looking at roads, bridges, culverts, water distribution and supply systems, wastewater treatment systems, et cetera. And based on that analysis, we rank our hazards within the City of Santa Cruz. And what I mean by that is we, we analyze those hazards and we assign a risk rating to determine which hazard is most significant to the city. And we look at those hazards in terms of natural disasters, earthquakes, fires, floods, et cetera, something that we are no strangers to here within the City of Santa Cruz. And then based on that analysis, we form game plans on what our attack is going to be to try to improve, improve the infrastructure here within the City of Santa Cruz. This plan makes us eligible for federal funding through FEMA. We have a couple of grant applications in the process already through the Water Department to improve our water supply systems that had been damaged during the 2017 storms. And so that's good news for the city, and we're going to be very aggressive going after this grant funding, trying to improve some of the deficiencies that we have discovered within our infrastructure. So that's kind of the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan in a nutshell. Tiffany was very, very helpful and instrumental in assisting us with this, the plan development and merging it with the Climate Adaptation Plan. The Climate Adaptation Plan is an appendix to the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. So that is my brief update to your council.
Thank you.
Ask questions?
Yeah, do you want to go through the full presentation first, and then you can ask questions, or?
Okay, I just had a specific question.
Okay, please, go ahead.
That's okay. So when you talk about the grants from FEMA for water, for our water system, is that to create redundancy in the system? So when we have another pipe failure, it won't mean the whole city won't have water access?
Actually, both. It's to create redundancy within our systems as well as improve our aging infrastructure. So it's a little bit of both.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to take, turn it over to Tiffany.
Great. Tiffany Wise-West, Sustainability and Climate Action Manager for the city. The rest of the presentation really is going to focus on the Climate Adaptation Plan Update. And just to kind of differentiate between the LHMP and the Climate Action Plan as well as the Climate Adaptation Plan. So the Climate Adaptation Plan doesn't really focus on emissions mitigation. That's our Climate Action Plan. Just wanted to make that clear. Although we acknowledge that it's extremely important to think about emissions in the context of adaptation because it does indeed dictate the pace and the severity of climate hazards. So that's something that we do continue to emphasize even through our adaptation work. So this document really characterizes the climate risks in space and time using the best available data that is out there right now. It sets forth specific goals and objectives related to climate adaptation for the city, and it recommends and prioritizes policy education and green and gray, or you can think of that as soft and hard infrastructure, as adaptation strategies. And really, in a nutshell, it creates a framework for you as decision makers and our leaders to build a more resilient community. And again, one that's informed by best climate science. Just real quickly, I wanted to take you through the timeline of this project. As Paul has mentioned, the projects were completed concurrently. We started them almost two years ago, forming an internal team of representatives from every department to participate in both the plan developments. In terms of the Climate Adaptation Plan, we completed our first sea level rise vulnerability assessment in April of 2017, followed soon thereafter by our social vulnerability to climate change analysis. Again, both of those are the first analyses that we've done pertaining to those topics. About a year ago, both the draft LHMP and the Adaptation Plan Update were released to the public in draft format. Since that time, the Climate Action Program has conducted 51 outreach events in the community in support of the Adaptation Plan, really to initiate a dialogue in the community, and we'll talk more in a moment about that. In January of this year, California Office of Environmental Services approved the draft LHMP, and in April, FEMA approved the LHMP. So our formal approval is pending the adoption of the LHMP here today. And then finally, here we are today with the final of both plans released and presented for adoption. I did want to mention that there are a couple policy drivers that have really influenced what we needed to do and kind of what we're required to do. SB 379 does require adaptation planning be included in the LHMP update, as well as the safety element of the general plan. So we have satisfied one aspect of SB 379 by this work. Also, the Coastal Condition, Commission, excuse me, recommends sea level rise policies in the local coastal program that are based in part on the sea level rise vulnerability assessment that we've completed. So we're making progress on getting through that LCP update in the near future. So as I mentioned, the first sea level rise vulnerability assessment, social vulnerability to climate change analysis, you've seen these images before. On the, your left-hand side, you see what the shaded blue that migrates inland are our combined coastal hazards. So that would be rising tide, erosion, and coastal storm flooding. And on the left-hand side, we assume that protective structures hold until 2060, and then we have a seawall failure down at Main Beach, and that's just a built-in assumption in this particular scenario. On the right-hand side, you see much more blue down in the downtown beach flats area over near Neri Lagoon. And this assumes that all of the protective structures, so that would be the levee, the pumps that pump out the downtown area, and the seawalls fail. So you see much more inundation, of course, should those not be. So you see much more inundation, of course, should those not be kept up. And one thing to note is that, at the time we completed the sea level rise vulnerability assessment, the extreme emissions scenario trajectory had not been available. How we kind of contextualize that, there aren't really maps until really this week, there's been some mapping that's come out on the 2100 extreme emissions trajectory. But what that means for us is that we are going to see these impacts earlier, if we are indeed on this severe emissions trajectory, which recent reports that have come out from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change seem to indicate, which is the UN authority that developed these scenarios. Also, you've seen the social vulnerability to climate change assessment. The red census block groups are those that are deemed highest in social vulnerability that's driven by things like incidence of poverty, disability, English not spoken well as a first language. And you see the orange then would be medium-high social vulnerability, and over in the, I guess that would be, the part of West Cliff where the arrow points to, is driven largely by elderly folks in that area. So again, we're just starting to scratch the surface on the utility of this analysis, but it does give us a lot of information on the drivers of social vulnerability. So then the draft Adaptation Plan update came forward, and again, we have 41 strategies that are prioritized that really are recommendations for policy, education, and infrastructure solutions that also have lots of detail in the appendix. You probably found this table in the body of the report, but you'll see things like timelines, costs, other actors that should be involved in the appendices of the plan update. As I mentioned, we embarked upon a nine-month outreach campaign to really start these conversations in our community. We've been doing a lot of cross-jurisdictional coordination, presentation of our work, getting presentations from other jurisdictions, and kind of sharing methodologies and, and resources. Our outreach events, we were really fortunate, as was called out in our staff report, that we were really able to target our socially vulnerable folks, and in fact, 20% of our outreach events were targeted to or in socially vulnerable communities. And that did garner our adaptation outreach campaign a word of merit from the Northern California American Planning Association. And then, of course, we have the final Climate Adaptation Plan update. And so what's happened between the draft that you saw about a year ago and now? We have gotten into much more detail in our treatment of a number of things that were simply called out in the past, things like public trust resources, access, recreation and surfing, public health. We were really able to get into some specifics on what we could see, as well as habitat and ecosystems. We partnered with NOAA on really expanding our ocean acidification section. We have a section on coastal visitor shifts that we anticipate, as well as strategy feedback from the public and a description of the public involvement. I think importantly, one thing that I missed is that, it's the second bullet, is how does our sea level rise analysis fit into the current state guidance on scenario selection? After we completed our analysis, another update came out. But indeed, I have actually been to the Ocean Protection Council, who forms this guidance, to share with them what we're doing. They're very interested in how a small city like us can do this kind of working, how we can share those methods across the state. Just real quickly, red dots on this screen show access points. As you can see, they are, a number of them coincide with our climate hazard zones, our coastal hazard zones. That's something that we'll be looking at through our West Cliff Drive project, and hopefully, if we get our grant through the Coastal Commission, to look at beach usage, access, and coastal resources. Another slide just shows our surf spots, which some of those are projected to be drowned sometime mid-century, so something to be concerned about. And of course, habitat. So you also see that monarch habitat, other aquatic habitat, and birds also coincide with some of these climate hazard zones, not to mention the wildfire hazard zones. So lots for us to dig into there as well, and this is really the first time we've kind of mapped this out together. And what's next? Just to round things out, completing our local coastal program and our general plan safety element updates will be happening over the next couple of years. We're kicking off at Open Streets this weekend, our West Cliff Drive shoreline adaptation plan. We're very excited about this project. It really is going to take us another step forward with our adaptation planning. Continue to talk to the county and Gary Griggs about a tidal gauge, which will really help us to understand sea level rise within our area of the sanctuary. We're looking at doing climate-influenced flood mapping of the San Lorenzo River, and we have called out in the plan annual reporting to city council on our progress, as we do on our Climate Action Plan. So your recommendation that's before you is to adopt both the LHMP and the Adaptation Plan, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Before we go into questions, I'd like to see, is any member of the public that'd like to speak to this item? It's here. And I know in advance of the meeting, Santa Cruz Action, or Climate Action Network Representative Pauline Seals asked for additional time, so you would have four minutes. So I'd like to first ask you to come up, and anyone else who wishes to speak to this item, please line up to my left, so I'll know who you are, then, then we'll bring it back to the council afterwards for additional questions and discussion and action. Okay, please, Pauline Seals, you can start.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and especially thank you, Tiffany, for all your excellent hard work on all this, and for including the public in the Climate Action Task Force. And I want to particularly commend you on staying abreast of the latest things that are happening and mentioning that the timelines in this report will probably be brought closer. So 2030 maybe, who knows, 2025, 2060, 2050, et cetera. The new, all the latest news indicates that it's way worse. This is what's been happening in Climate Action for a long time. What I have here, I have a copy, I gave one to Tiffany already, I have a copy for Mr. Banal and for each of the, onto one while I'm talking. This is, this is an extraction from this report that was just issued yesterday. The Guardian, the New York Times, and a lot of other people have written a lot of words, and I decided to just extract and comment on a few of the graphics from the report itself. So this basically is from the UN's report. If you look at this first, I'll talk for a minute. Basically, it says that things are extremely drastic and we need to take action right away. And the way they illustrate this is a series of little graphs, and these, I've given you all a report, a copy, because I don't expect people to absorb, absorb it immediately, but you can look at it later. And in graphical format, this is showing is where we are now is the little gray bar across. So on all these various fields on, on this thing, the gray bar is where we are now, and most of them are white or yellow. White is fine, and yellow is getting into a more hazardous zone. We know that's already happening with wildfires, floods in various places, et cetera. It's inevitable that we will get to 1.5, and I'll get back to that in a second. And as we move through, that only seems like an extra half degree, what's the big deal? But you will see that in virtually, and there's two different ways they show it. Actually, I found this one more appealing. But in all these various categories, all of a sudden, we're moving through the yellow, and if we hit 1.5, we're starting into the red. Some of them start earlier and some start later, but it's like going from a sort of, oh yeah, maybe something's happening through, oh my lord, to disaster. In that difference between moving from 1 to 1.5 and then going beyond. So it's very important. Now, if you look at the graphic at the back, the bottom on the back there, and this is UN stuff. They worked out various possible ways by which the world might be able to limit to 1.5 degrees temperature rise. And every single one of them shows it a deep chute down. It's like, reminds me of taking my kid to the playground, you know? Only that one's too hazardous. You're not old enough to go on that one, that's too steep. That's what we have to do, guys. So no more business as usual. Yeah, we've got to keep the lights on, we have lots of talented people, I'm sure we'll find ways. Around the world, people are finding new economy ways, and my friends will talk a little more to that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, you can keep.
Did you hear my speech? I may not get through it all.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Carol Long, and I'm talking about the Climate Action Plan, and I, of course, endorse it, the Adaptation Plan, but we need to do a lot more than adapt. I wrote down several phrases that were heard earlier in this meeting. Big deal, watershed moment, and this is what this is. If we do not act now drastically, within the next 12 years, we will reach tipping points which will, according to the Intergovernmental Plan, Panel on Climate Change, result in severe and widespread collapse or damage to both human economic systems and to ecosystems. That six out of the 11 systems that were analyzed by the latest report by the IPCC will be under this severe and widespread stress, under the worst case, which is two degrees of centigrade warming. If we keep it to 1.5, three of these systems will be under severe and widespread damage. If we want to get to this best-case scenario, we have to start right now, setting goals to do away with fossil food fuel use and global warming emissions by 2050. That means that the plan that Tiffany is working on has to set these goals, and the city council and the city government have to take drastic actions to draw down our emissions and to adapt to climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Dana Bagshaw, and I just want to say I'm really glad for this report. We hear so much about climate change these days and global and all, but this report just brings it home to Santa Cruz, and it points out many of the problem areas that we're going to face as time goes on, and the time is getting shorter as, as we've all been hurt. So I just want to say that I think this is very, very important. It should be one of our top priorities. And yeah, no, no business as usual. It's like, the time has come now for action, and we've got to do it. And we've got this, this map here to confirm the fact that, you know, it is critical even here in Santa Cruz. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Susan Cavalieri. As you've heard, we have only a very short time to transform our city, our state, our country, and the world if we're going to survive the coming climate crisis, which is predicted to occur by 2040. I suggest you look to Gil Penelosa of 880 Cities for transformative ideas. He states that we need to move from talking to doing. We need to try new ideas, and this will require guts and vision. We can no longer say we can't try an innovative idea, just try it as soon as possible, and if it fails, return things to the way they had been. Change is hard for everyone, but the most transformative change is climate change, which will impact our city, as reported by Tiffany Wise-West. We need to look to other cities like Copenhagen to redesign our city with open streets, safe biking, and good public transit. Redesigning our city around people, not cars, and the use of fossil fuels will decrease our carbon footprint. More put, put more people on the streets to support our businesses and create a greater feeling of community. Please move our city forward to fight the coming climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Nate Alexander Kennedy will be our last speaker.
Hello, I'm Nate Alex Kennedy, dot Kennedy at gmail dot com, 3469888. What I have to say is that us dealing with climate change is one of the most important things that we can do. It's the biggest threat to human life on this planet. With that said, there's a book that I think every last one of you needs to read. It's called The Emperor Wears No Clothes by Jack Herrier. And what it addresses is that, yes, hemp, marijuana, the same plant, has literally a million different uses, 50,000 known uses, to do just about anything, including we could make cars from it. Henry Ford did in 1936, and then we decided to outlaw marijuana right afterwards. But aside from the whole marijuana issue, what I think the city needs to do is start growing industrial hemp on its own. Not, not the stuff that gets you high, the stuff that can be used for everything else. I think we need to be a model for the state, for the country, for the world, by being one of the first cities to grow as much industrial hemp as we can, put it to use. It can be used for clothes, to make car, clothes, paper, food, medicine. We could make everything from cars to computers to spaceships out of it. Why haven't we done this yet, is the big question. Okay, 20 seconds left. Another thing I need to say is we need to start adding subtitles to the speeches here. My phone does it, my tablet does it, the software is available for live voice-to-text recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any additional comment, public comment regarding this item? Item 16 regarding, it's a resolution adopting the 2018, 2023 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan and Climate Adaptation Plan update. Bring them back to the council for discussion, further action.
I'm prepared to move the recommendation. I just want to thank and acknowledge you, Tiffany, for your work. This is just incredible. The report is so well-written. Did you write the entire? It's, it's really thorough, really well-written, really easy to read, and there's no question that we have a lot of work to do, that this is a global concern, you know? And just the report, of course, that came out yesterday is unbelievable. I'm wondering, so I'll move the recommendation.
I'll second.
But I do have one thing. I was wondering, and I apologize if I missed this, is this in any way shared with some of our state and federal representatives to let them know about the work that's happening in Santa Cruz, or how they can advocate for us also?
We have not sent it to them yet. We certainly can do that, happy to do so. However, I know they are aware of what we're doing. As I mentioned, I've spoken at the OPC and other venues across the state where we've had state and federal representatives from a number of different agencies, but that's a great suggestion, and I will definitely do that. Thank you.
I have, just, well, a quick follow-up to that. Perhaps we could add to the motion direction to ask the mayor to send a letter to our state and federal representatives with just acknowledgement that we've approved this. I assume that the vote will go that way, but acknowledgement that we've approved it and look forward to being in communication with them over time about ways that we can, you know, we can work with them and hopefully garner additional resources for this, the implementation phase. So, and I just wanted to make one other, it's a question, it's a big question and not one that I'm expecting you to answer now, but, you know, I, one of the things that really struck me, in addition to how thorough this is, how amazingly well organized and documented, you, all of this work that you've put into it, the, the part about, I'm going to turn to the, you know, it's the final part of the main document on page 78 on plan, the plan maintenance process and ensuring that, that we keep this adaptation, this Climate Adaptation Plan active and relevant. So, you know, there, aside from, and there's some ways that you, that are suggested in the introduction and throughout in terms of evaluating the plan. and throughout in terms of evaluating the plan and updating it over time. So, aside from, you know, so one, you have continuing to invite public participation. I think that's a great idea. I mean, you've done a tremendous amount of work in the past couple of years to hold all of those meetings, get the public engaged. So, you know, just if there are ways that the city council can be more actively involved, I personally would like to. I came to one meeting and wasn't able to come to many of them. But, you know, really staying in touch with us, and we should, I think, all be in touch with you about participating in those efforts so that they're, you know, broadly advertised, you know, accessible to the policymakers, et cetera. And then how we can incorporate some of the strategies in our policymaking, you know, how can we help you with your work, I guess, is the big question, and something that I look forward to talking with you more about. So, that's what I, and then I also want to thank members of the audience who are here speaking about this, who have continued to be in touch with us, encouraging us to declare the climate emergency that we are actually in. And I, you know, I know that that's a challenging process to work through, but I do hope that we can continue to have that conversation as part of implementation of this plan.
Councilmember Matthews?
I want to specifically thank Tiffany for her spectacular work in this area. Clearly, we are in a new time in terms of climate awareness. And I'm just, in reference to a couple of other comments, cover on Western City was planning collaboratively for extreme heat events. I mean, this is just on everybody's mind. I went to the LEED conference last month in Long Beach, and there is a Coastal Communities, Coastal Cities Caucus. Are you plugged into them, Tiffany?
I am not.
I mentioned it to LEED, but you could guess.
It just started last year.
Yeah. And they're impressive. So, I think that's something we could become more tuned in with. And I'll just mention, I serve on the Chamber of Commerce Community Affairs Committee, and Tiffany gave a presentation to that group maybe six months ago as part of the community outreach. And you'd think, of course, the community outreach is going to environmental groups, but it was a very broad spectrum of groups. And that, the attentiveness and responsiveness at that presentation was impressive. And I think that just speaks to the awareness and concern is pretty much ubiquitous now. And I think when we talk about future engagement and participating in commitment and solutions, we should cast an exceptionally wide net. So, I agree. I think whatever we can do to support that direction is really important. And then I just want to say, my husband, who reads the New York Times every morning thoroughly, was sitting there this morning saying, "Oh, my God, this climate action. Do we have anything in Santa Cruz that would show the impact?" And I said, "Well, I'm reading it right now." So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Crown, anything? No?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Tiffany, for all the work that's involved with this. Clearly, we're playing catch-up. And I'm not sure how to take, how folks take it, you know, like seriously. Like, you mentioned Vice Mayor, that we have a lot, clearly we have a lot of work to do. But what is the work that we have to do, and what are the things we're checking off? Because it just doesn't seem to me that we're taking this, I mean, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming, and I think for most people, it's overwhelming. It's very hard to talk about with people. It's been years to get people's attention. And now it seems like our administration in Washington is moving away from it. Speaking of the New York Times, Bill was probably reading this, and it comes from, I mean, a couple of things happened this week. You know, the UN Climate Report came out and gave us 20 to 2040 for, you know, the climate crisis to, my daughter's going to be 45. The guy who won the, well, one of the, shared the Nobel Prize yesterday, a Yale professor, he said, quote, "The policies are lagging very, very far, miles, miles, miles behind science of what needs to be done," Professor Nordhaus said shortly after learning of the prize. It's hard to be optimistic. I think we all share that. And we're actually going backward in the United States with the disastrous policies of the Trump administration. And I just would ask the challenge, maybe our council, you know, we've done this before, you know? We've created policy here in Santa Cruz that did challenge Washington. And now, more than ever, we need to really, you know, and our governor, outgoing governor now, is also trying to challenge them on climate, Washington DC on climate. And I'm just wondering how we, as a public body, can step it up and be part of that? Because I think Santa Cruz, like offshore oil drilling, that, you know, we were the first city to say, "No, you're not going to drill off the shore, the coast of California." And we prevailed. And so, what else can we do? I mean, there's, what's the low-hanging fruit? I know that Tiffany's been grabbing a lot of grants and doing a lot of work around the area of trying to address the issues of our, I call it, climate disruption, climate change. What else can we do? I would just urge this council to empower Tiffany Moore to bring us stuff. I mean, there's, you know, as one of the speakers said about trees and bicycles and, you know, we're not, we don't even know many trees we're cutting down, and we don't, you know, planting trees. And we don't have a tree inventory that really senses where, and that's the easiest and greatest thing we can do to combat climate change, is planting more trees. And that seems rather, rather simple. Of course, you have to maintain them, and that's a municipal function. But I'm just wondering, there's so much that we could be doing, and how do we, as a city, begin that process? And that's what I'm interested in. I mean, maybe Councilmember Brown asked a bigger question, too, and maybe that's too big of a question right now to tackle. I think this whole report is too big to tackle right now, but here it is. And reducing gas emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, you know, carbon dioxide, that is the number-one thing. Everybody says that. And how do we get there? And one of the charts that we were given, but also what, and the New York Times backs it up, we are going to have to drastically, I mean, our whole fleet needs to be electric, for example. I mean, are we moving toward that? I know we've bought some electric cars, we've got some vehicles out there. But is there some sort of plan that we need to put in place, you know, an emergency climate plan that would acknowledge, like we've acknowledged our homeless and houseless and housing crisis? And can we put forward something that acknowledges a resolution that says, you know, we are in a climate crisis? And the city of Santa Cruz is the city of Santa Cruz. We are not the state of California, we're not the federal government. But how do we do what I think a lot of our constituents are asking, and also what the planet needs, and what I think we know what to do? We have, you know, the various departments up at UCSC studying this all the time. What can we, as a city, do? I mean, we're going to build a bunch of buildings downtown. We know it's in a floodplain. I saw a little of that. We're even going to put bedrooms on the first floor. So, we know we have a floodplain, we know that this is coming, and then they've just stepped it up. The UN report says 2040, and we live on the coast. And I'm kind of not, I'm just, I'm asking this because I don't have an answer. I'm trying to grapple with it and look for assistance in how, who's going to tell the people? How do we get this message out? And how do we have a consistent plan in evaluating? And it keeps coming back to us. Because right now, I feel like we, as a country, but also as a community, are not moving fast enough and not feeling the emergency nature of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crown. Councilmember Norrion?
So, you know, one of the things I wanted to point out and wanted to ask is, you know, as much as we might feel deficient in not addressing climate change enough, I know that this has been a work in progress for a while. And while I was on the Transportation and Public Works Commission, we were one of the first committees to review. So, I want to say that there has been a public review process that has really been vibrant and has brought the public in. And there's been several opportunities for the public, not just through your workshops, but through other, you know, commissions that advise the city council. So, I just really want to make sure that we understand this has been a real dynamic public process. The other thing that I want to mention, and Christopher, I wasn't going to say this, but your words, your comments just kind of inspired me to think about, you know, what inspired the last environmental movement. It was rivers burning on fire. And so, it makes me think we have to, you know, for the rest of the nation to look up and pay attention, we need another river-burning sort of incident. It seems like, unfortunately, people don't take data. They need to see something real in front of their eyes to make the situation relatable, I guess. I guess it's trying to make this relatable to people, and maybe that's what we'll finally do. And I hope we don't have to wait for a river, another river, to burn on fire to get people's attentions. But, and also with offshore oil drilling, it wasn't just Santa Cruz alone. I remember that distinctly because it was the issue that really brought me in to local politics. I remember in high school, Leon Panetta, Gary Patton, other folks came for a forum at Santa Cruz High to discuss offshore oil drilling. And that just really piqued my interest, and I think got a lot of us in that room interested in being involved. And one of the things that struck me is from that, it was a movement, it may have started here locally to stop offshore oil drilling, but it started to be embraced by our region and then our state. Because I don't think by ourselves we would have stopped offshore oil drilling. So, I think that that's another lesson for us in regards to climate change, is, you know, we do our due diligence here, but we've got to be reaching out to other municipalities and other regions to hopefully embrace this. That leads into my question of how many other municipalities and regions have contacted you because we're seen as sort of the goal to reach in regards to climate adaptation and trying to actually maybe make, you know, draw back some of our effects of climate change?
I can't even tell you how many jurisdictions have contacted me. Probably close to a dozen, maybe. You hit upon a really critical point in this field of work, which is the collaboration across scales, because there's no need to reinvent the wheel. When there are good models out there, good resources out there, we're part of a number of collaboratives that facilitate that kind of work, where we are indeed viewed as a leader. I know that is maybe not solid comfort in light of the IPCC reports and that kind of thing, but we do stand out as a leader in the state, especially for a city of our size, on this kind of work. But it is critically important for us to continue that collaboration. And I loved the comment on coming to these events, because one thing that came out of the public outreach, one of the comments was that we need community leaders to be the face for this very critical issue, just like we have had, you know, Bruce McPherson for Monterey Bay Community Power. We need local leaders to show that this truly is important. So, I really take to heart that offer to come to these, and I will take you up on that, because I do think that's an important representation that the city needs to make to convey the importance. So, thank you for offering that, and thank you for acknowledging the point around collaboration, because it's crucially important.
I mean, obviously, CO2 emissions don't stop at our city limits. So, we could be doing great work, but if everyone else around us isn't, it helps that we're doing this great work, but it doesn't get us to the goal that we need to get to. So, I'm just curious, how many times do you have opportunities to go to regional and national conferences and things to trade best practices and ideas?
Quite frequently. In fact, I'm driving to Santa Barbara tomorrow to give a keynote at the Central Coast Sustainability Summit on this work, not only in Santa Cruz, but in the region. Fortunately, our leadership in the city manager's office is very supportive of that knowledge sharing, and I do very frequently, as much as my travel budget allows, to go and share what we're doing. And it's also an opportunity for me to learn, I mean, I've learned about so many resources at these different, we can't, we know that there just aren't the resources there to hire consultants to figure all this stuff out. Fortunately, there's groups like the Nature Conservancy, NOAA, that are providing tools at no cost to us to allow us to be on the forefront of the best available science. And the only way to learn about that is through the webinars, the conferences, those kinds of things. And our office has been very supportive of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Crown?
I would respectfully disagree with your last comment. The resources are there. We're just not spending them in the right way. I mean, there's something like a carbon tax, a cap and trade, the money exists to do that. Getting back to what Rochelle was saying, there's multiple rivers burning on the same paper today in the New York Times. There's a child playing amongst the dead farm animals, the bones of the farm animals in Wales. There's a fire burning in Shasta County. I mean, they're just putting these pictures together. There's the coral reef in Australia, and there's this, what they're calling now a super typhoon, you know, that's just happening and unfolding in Hong Kong. So, I don't know what it would take to get us going, but rivers are burning all over. And, yeah.
Thanks.
I just want to say, my hope is that, you know, I mean, the fire, fires have been horrible this year. I hope that that maybe motivates people, and when they hear our federal administration say climate change isn't an issue, they start questioning that. That's, I think, the best we can hope for in this climate. Well, oh, my God, I didn't mean to say, in political climate, excuse me.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
I just appreciate the comments, and I know that one of the things I heard from the report was, you know, that the scientists did their work, and it's up for the decision-makers to do theirs. And I think that's an international point that needs to be made in terms of how we're going to address this comprehensively. But with that said, I also want to acknowledge the amendment that the Secretary of the Motion made in terms of how we can relay what we're doing to our legislators via a letter from the mayor or other ways that the Climate Action Manager has in mind for that as well.
Is that included in the direction? Okay. So, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Watkins, second by Councilmember Brown. I'll just echo all the comments that were made earlier, and also thank you, Tiffany, for really putting together a spectacular report. I remember when Gary Griggs first, I think it was, that was the first report he did, and I think we just got on, and I was just shocked by the impact of climate change because they outlined all the city municipal infrastructure that needed to be, you know, adapted to address climate. And if there's, it's not a burning river, but when you look at a map that shows, you know, the loss of actually, you know, are actually public spaces and private lands as a result of climate change, that's a stark reminder of what we're heading to. And I just would, I really appreciate the graphics that you provided in there. And I, one question I had before we put it to a vote is, how do the public, you know, are they notified? Like, when someone's in an area that's going to be susceptible to these climate change impacts, how are they notified? Like, if someone goes into some agreement with someone to transfer land or anything, are there, are there things that are required for them right now to be notified of this work or any reports that are done?
No, there's not right now. That is certainly something that will be looked at through the Local Coastal Program Update. And I believe that in the Coastal Commission Sea Level Rise Guidance documents, they actually recommend looking at, say, for example, geologic disclosure for, say, coastal property. So, those will be things that we will be considering during that process.
And I know, I think it was 2007 that the first adaptation plan was done, is that right?
2011. Our first LHMP was in 2007.
Okay. And how is that kind of, I guess, coordinated with our general plan? I mean, do we have, has it been integrated? So, these, this kind of updates now are something that we have integrated into our general plan?
That's the second piece of SB 379, is that the Planning Department will be adopting the LHMP into the safety element of the general plan, and that's how it becomes part of the general plan. So, they will be doing that over the next, I think, year or two.
Okay. I appreciate it. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Watkins, second by Councilmember Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Chase absent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item number 17. This is the Charter Amendment Committee Appointments. And I believe if there's no one coming up from the city manager's office, then what we're going to do is just treat this like we've done with other advisory bodies. However, this is, these are six appointments, and so, one consideration is to, you know, first of all, take the nominations that come forward, and maybe we take the first pass with three, because it's, you know, six appointments. We vote, and then we see where things fall so that we can go for a second round, so that we're at least taking those, if that you follow. We're going to, everybody will go through and make nominations, we'll make the first round of appointments, and then we'll come back a second time afterwards if we need to follow up, if there's any... if we need to follow up if there's any additional votes for those that did not reach a threshold vote on the first path. One thought also, and I, it's something that we've, I've seen in the past, is the idea of alternates, having those voted on at this time. Is that something that, where we could identify perhaps two alternates that might be assigned in the event that there isn't someone there and then we have it done? So I just want to put that out there as well. Councilmember Brown.
Just a logistical question. Would we make that decision after?
After the six are appointed? Okay. All right, let's begin. So I'm going to start because I know that we were focusing on you last time, Councilmember Brown.
Right, every time.
We'll start on, we'll start on the right side with Councilmember Crone.
So you can make?
Let's do up to, up to three nominations at this time?
Okay. I would nominate Patrice Boyle, Denise Holbert, and Noah Thoren, the UCSE student.
Okay, hold on a second. Okay, it's Patrice Boyle, Denise Holbert. And the other one was Noah Thoren?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Matthews.
In addition, I would like to nominate Dave Schuman and Kishav Kumar.
Is there a third?
The first one.
Dave Schuman, Kishav Kumar.
Well, I'll just say, this to me is a weird way to do it. There are plenty of other people I'd like, but I don't want to over-nominate, so.
Okay, got it, understand. So there's two. Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I feel the same way. Councilmember Matthews here. I will, in addition, include Jamie Garfield and Sylvia Karas.
Councilmember Royan?
So I would like Schuman.
If it's already been said, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just for my own nominating. Okay, that's it.
She said Sabios. Any others? You mentioned Dave Schuman, but.
Yeah. Did you want me to say three?
If you want.
So Schuman, Sabios, Kumar.
So in addition to those that have already been said, I would just add Timorey Gordon.
Can't we just put them all on the floor and vote?
Do that, too.
Yeah, this isn't working, I don't think.
I don't know, I think it'll work.
I think I was just, we're looking for, trying to treat it as we would our advisory appointments. So I'd like to put on Christina Horn additionally.
But now we've got everybody but except for two.
Well, we're going to see where the four votes are. We can do multiple passes, that's.
Just to clarify one more time. So now we're just going to vote for three. And then those who don't make the first list, then we can re-nom, we can nominate again.
That's correct.
And how many do they have to get to be elected?
Four. Four votes.
We vote for our top three. Three or four or more.
Four or more. Okay. So if you want to read off the, can we, do you want to just vote for three? Or, I mean, we could vote for more than three. How would you like to approach that based on?
Me personally, I'd rather vote for my six.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
Let everyone vote for their six.
Okay.
And then be able to change your vote. How do people feel? I mean, you're the boss.
Yeah. I think that I was trying to do to expedite. I'm actually, if, did you, are all of your nominations up?
Yep.
Okay. See. All of, all of the, I'm comfortable with all, if everybody would like to vote for all of their six, if your nominations are there, you could do so.
There's only three right now who haven't been nominated.
Okay.
So if anyone wants Bosworth, Brooks, or Gio.
I would, I would do Joe Gio.
You, okay.
Did you put three on the floor already?
I did.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Okay. Okay. Okay, so you can use all six votes, if you'd like, on this to. Can you read off those? It's those, the only ones that have not been nominated are?
Steve Bosworth and Bill Brooks.
Did you want to call the names of those free ones for vote?
Go by individual.
Yeah, by individual.
Nominate, right?
Yeah.
So voting for Patrice Boyle.
All those voting for Patrice Boyle, aye.
Three, right? Joe Gio. Denise Holbert.
That you named? Christina Horn?
How many? Well, I'm just trying, one, two, three.
I know.
I, I gotta save mine.
I'm going to wait because I have.
So three?
I have two.
It looks like you have five and the sixth person is tied. We have a tie. It looks like Patrice Boyle and Christina Horn.
Read off those that have been selected.
The appointed ones?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Gus Sabios, Timorey Gordon, Denise Holbert, Kishav Kumar, and David Schuman. So now we could do a vote for Patrice Boyle and Christina Horn. Is that how you want to do that one?
Sure.
Why don't we just say Boyle and we raise our hand?
Yeah.
So Patrice Boyle. And Christina Horn. So it's Patrice Boyle.
And I mentioned if you, to do two alternates? I would say, I would, I would select Christina Horn as an alternate?
The idea of alternates is, was not part of this proposal. And I personally don't support that. I think we need to, this is going to be really intensive. And I think we need to have people who are there and committed. And if they're not there, too bad. But I think it's going to take a great continuity of effort. So my own preference would be just to stay with the group that we have and let it go at that.
Any other?
You know, we don't have alternates to any of our commissions. We didn't have, we, anyway, I would just prefer to keep it clean.
Councilmember Roy?
Did we have alternates to the Water WASAC or?
Advisory Committee?
Advisory Committee.
We did. I think we did for the Public Safety Committee.
Maybe if some of the folks who've been identified to serve are unable to, or kind of, we can let the other folks know.
Revisit at that time.
Revisit at that time, or something like that. This was really, really challenging.
It was.
There was incredible people that.
I know.
I, you couldn't really go wrong with a lot of these folks.
So what is, at this point, is the council feel, they do not want to identify alternates at this time?
My feeling is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'd be fine either way. I don't know that it matters if we do it now or should somebody not be able to serve.
Just have a question, just occurred to me that might make sense if the council is going to consider appointing an alternate to also give some direction as to the circumstances under which the alternate would actually serve. Is it for one missed meeting? Or is it in the event that one of the appointees decides not to participate?
Yeah, that's, that's good, that's good feedback.
So under the circumstances, I don't know if you need a motion or a sense of the group. I'd prefer that we just leave the nominations as they are for now.
I don't think there needs to be a motion, but I, but I think, I think having some guidelines in regards to the appointments, I was thinking consistent with what we have for advisory bodies. When someone misses a certain number of meetings, then, then they, they're no longer considered a member.
I'm not sure if we have a specific guideline, but there are provisions in the government code that, that discuss when an office is presumed to be vacant. They're pretty forgiving. You have to miss meetings for, I think, three months in a row or something like that, so.
Also, to answer your question about the WASAC, that did not have alternates.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, at this point, then, we can hold off on that. So if you could, can you name those people that reached the threshold votes for the appointment? Yes.
Patrice Boyle, Gus Sabios, Timorey Gordon, Denise Holbert, Kishav Kumar, and David Schuman.
Thank you. So in terms of action, is there a motion to appoint those six members at this time based on the vote?
Move to approve.
I'll second that. So this is a motion to approve Patrice Boyle, Gus Sabios, Timorey Gordon, Denise Holbert, Kishav Kumar, and David Schuman to the Charter Amendment Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Chase absent. Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move on to the meeting calendar. I don't know if anyone has any comments in regards to the calendar. Councilmember Crone?
I do. Since I cannot really talk about it. Let me see where, there it is. I wanted to make a motion to place the resolution of the City of Santa Cruz in support of educating tenants on their rights to post political signs under California Civil Code Section 1940.4 on the next council agenda.
Any discussion? Okay, that motion fails for lack of a second. Any other discussion regarding the calendar? Okay, seeing none, we, at this time, are recessing to closed session. At 5:30 PM, council members will recess from closed session, return to the days to hear from the public for oral communications. Following oral communications, council members will return to the closed session when we will finish that item. I'd also like to announce that the 7:00 PM session overflow will be available in the Tony Hill Room. At this point, we're adjourning to the closed session. 5:30 PM for oral communication.
5:30?
Yes, sir. Okay. Oral communications is an opportunity for members of the community to speak to us on items that are not listed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to us in regards to oral communications? Okay? Everybody seated, too? Yes? If so, please line up to my left, to your right. And you'll have two minutes to speak. Sir, please step up. You're, you can begin.
Bruce Thomas from Do-For Neighbors. I'm here to provide a brief update on what's happening with our petition. This is the hard copy in case.
Just keep going, you can hand it after.
It was presented two weeks ago. I want to say thank you for helping inspire some discussion. And the news is, we had a four-party meeting yesterday. It was a very good discussion among the neighbors, Starbucks, Blaze Pizza, and some city folks. And it was very interesting to hear everybody's take on what's going on. And there is a sense that Starbucks and Blaze Pizza want to find a collective solution. So positive news there. Officer Sergeant, I don't know how to say your last name. Everly was there. Anyways, couple items to note that I think you're going to be getting a form, a more, another update as things really solidify. But right now, we're in a state of talking about no idling signs on Do-For Street. And Starbucks has talked about adding some "Be courteous to your neighbors" placards in their business, which is a really, I thought, a really good suggestion. Talk of establishing a designated loading zone is one of the key things that I think has come out of this. Because no, there was no designated space for Starbucks and Blaze Pizza deliveries to take place prior. Delivery times will be a key notion that also has to be resolved because of noise and vibrations. Case in point, the reason this was raised to a level of a petition was, happened this last Friday. After two days of being woken up at midnight, the noise and vibrations, I called the police to report a disturbance of the peace. I opened my front door so they could hear it. It was so loud, the police dispatcher could not hear me. So just, these are real problems. And I really appreciate the help that's been provided because we've got some meetings and discussions going that seem to be working towards a solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for the feedback. I appreciate you coming back.
More coming. The Assistant City Manager, I think, has been tasked with reporting back to you with the results from the Planning Department.
Is that Martine, who's been assigned?
You know.
The woman said.
It's in the Plan Department.
Tina?
No, was this?
No.
Tina, yeah, I think it was Tina Scholz.
Tina Scholz.
Scholz, yeah.
Okay, Tina Scholz. Okay, great. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Satya O'Ryan. I want to thank you for the action you took this afternoon. I want to say more about 5G in general. And my opinion is that it should not be happening at all, not just delayed. I've been, I've been talking with the Planning Department quite a lot. And I've learned that the 5G cell towers will need to be installed every 500 feet or 40 per square mile, which, and I'm assuming that that's per carrier.[1785.61] And I'm assuming that that's per carrier, so the actual number could be double or triple that amount. I've seen the ads for the 5G internet of things about self-driving cars and smart appliances. And I don't know if people know this, but this frequency has only been used so far by the military for... As a weapon for crowd control purposes. It's never been used in public spaces before, and it's never been tested before. So my question comes is like, who is looking out for our safety? I hear that we want to look out for our safety, but the standards for safety set by the FCC are based on 20-year-old testing, and recent scientific studies have shown serious harm at levels thousands of times lower than that to humans, animals, plants. So it's something worth looking into. And also, the 1996 Telecommunications Act, which I'm sure you're all aware of, but I wasn't, exempts health and environmental concerns from any of these tower installations. And how is that fair to us? I don't understand. So it seems to me that the FCC and the telecom industry are not concerned with our health and safety, so we need to be. And there's no lack of wireless coverage in this town, and I don't think we need self-driving cars and smart appliances, so what are we trading for that? You know, why are...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Gail Nakunum, and I want to thank you for voting not to streamline 5G. I live across, within 1,000 feet of a new cell tower. I don't live in Capitola, but that's where the tower is, and since then, I've been having trouble sleeping. Like, one morning, I was up till 4:00 in the morning, just wired. You get wired, and you get tired. And there's no way out of this. I mean, I live there unless I want to move to the, you know, the woods somewhere, I guess. So what I'm thinking of is ways to protect myself, and I did find this material. It's called SKIF. Segmented, compartmented, secure compartmented information facility. It is what the government uses to keep its data facilities from being hacked, and it blocks 10G. And you can use it in the walls. And the way they're going, you're probably going to have to use three or four layers of this, because fifth generation has a wide range of frequencies, as you know, and it is used for crowd control dispersion. It makes your skin feel like it's burning. So I'm not going to argue with the military. I'm not going to wait for people to stop this, because the telecom industry is probably going to get its way, unless we're like some other cities that are suing the FCC for trying to push this kind of law. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Keith McHenry with Funa Pahms. And you... We rented Loudon Nelson so that we could raise money for Santa Cruz Disaster Preparedness Plan, and we've already gotten, like, water filtration. We're seeking a space for another container. We are collecting a lot more food, and we're prepared for, like, if there's an earthquake or something like that, that we could respond and help the community as we did in past earthquakes and other disasters. And so we rented this space. I've rented Loudon Nelson a number of times. And then about 4:30, the day of our event, I received a phone call from Sheri to come down and show that we are residents in the community. And so I brought down my driver's license, which has my mailbox at the downtown post office, because I don't have any other personal information about being here, other than my mailbox. And I brought down our flyer to show that we actually cook. We actually cook at India Joe's, and we rent this space every week for years, and we share at the downtown post office. But we were told by staff that we were not residents, and we'd have to pay an additional fee. And so that, we think, is unreasonable. And now the city has additional $100 of ours, which they're not willing to return. And so what's most important is that there are many people that actually live here who don't have physical addresses, like Funa Pahms, other than, you know, we rent every Saturday and Sunday from 12:30 to 3:30. And those people should be allowed to be considered residents, if they are in fact residents, as we are, and that you should not give, like, a roughly 30 minutes notice that you need to prove that you're a resident. So I would like the $100 returned to Funa Pahms as soon as humanly possible.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Nate Alex dot Kennedy at gmail dot com, 346-9888. I was speaking earlier about how we've got the technology to translate voice into text live, and I've got my tablet right here doing it right now. So what I think we really need to do with these meetings is we need to make them more friendly to those that are hard of hearing and deaf, and those who are blind and hard of sight. And as far as all this goes, we need for... We need to have radio broadcasts of these meetings. People can listen to it on their car, tune into it at home, where you don't need video. At the same time, for people that are deaf or hard of hearing, we can have live subtitles saying every word that... Showing every word that they say up on the screen. And not only that, but the people who are not native English speakers, many Spanish speakers around here, we can do live translations into any... Into just about any other language. Spanish, French, German, you name it. And so we could have a live feed of what somebody's saying at the bottom of the screen on TV at home, and/or up here, and also have up on the top, or one on the top, one on the bottom, have a translation into Spanish. So every word that I'd be saying would pop up as a Spanish word on the bottom of the And last note here, I've already said my email. You guys should know it by now, so I want to talk to any council member who's willing to take the time. So please get back to me with an email of what you have on your schedule.
Thank you. Before you speak, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak during oral communications? If you'd please line up to my left, any other members of the public that wish to speak at this time? Okay, ma'am, you'll be our last speaker, so please go ahead, sir.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Vince Font of Santa Cruz. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of Viaduct Court. We're a small hilltop community near the Santa Cruz wharf. In the last three weeks, there have been three fires along the hillside and the path below our homes. All of them have been extinguished by the fire department. Fortunately, the first two didn't cause any damage, but the most recent one, this last Sunday, did cause a house fire. It was witnessed by Councilwoman Naroyan, if I'm saying her name right.
It very well.
Thank you very much. The path in the hillside I'm talking about is about 1,000-foot stretch between Depot Park and the Santa Cruz wharf. Along those 1,000 feet, it touches a children's playground, a BMX bike park, the Neri Lagoon Wildlife Refuge, an official monarch butterfly habitat, the Roaring Camp train track, 1,000-year-old trussel, and the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Exploration Center. I'd like to address three issues that have come up since these fires have begun. When responding to our 911 calls each time, the emergency responders had trouble identifying, finding, and accessing this area. We had hoped to see an increase in security or police presence, but we haven't, and we feel that it would be wise to clear dry brush and fallen wood in the area, which we have done personally, but as I mentioned, there is a monarch reserve habitat that we don't want to go into. So we, the residents of Viaduct Court, hope that the city council can see the vulnerable nature of this important area, consider the following measures for the Depot Park path. Assure local emergency responders have knowledge of its path and its access points. Increase security on patrol, and clear brush and deadwood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you could leave your mailing address or email address, write it on one of the sheets, we'll make sure that you get some follow-up also from staff.
I actually have maps here, if anyone is unfamiliar, and I'll add my email. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you're our last speaker? Can you step up?
Hello, my name is Tammy Donnelly. I'm here because I'm extremely concerned about the 5G. I think that if we could see all these invisible waves once the cellphone towers came in, the Wi-Fi, the smart meters, nobody would dare to approve this, because we're already so saturated. There's so many health problems. I'm actually became electrically sensitive once they started installing the cellphone towers at Cabrillo. I live very close to there, and I help a lot of people, and I've invested a lot of money and time into testing things, products, and devices in the home, and wearable to help protect people. But this 5G is so intense, I don't think there's anything out there to protect us that, you know, animals... I mean, the whole... I know they're trying to fast-forward this through the whole country, and if you guys... I don't know if you guys have listened to Tom Wheeler, who's in charge of the FCC, who's supposed to protect us. I mean, he's made it super-clear that it's so important for these companies to make their billions of dollars, and he even says, if anybody tells you this 5G, you know, that they question you, run as fast as you can the other way. Don't listen to them, because he goes, his quote is, "It's damn important for these companies to get their billions of dollars." And that's what it is. It's you follow the money. It's all about the money. And so they obviously are not here to protect our health. So as the city and the county, we each have to do it individually, and a lot of them are. Not enough, but it's starting, because people know the dangers of this. It's not like just going from 4G to 5G. It could be hundreds and hundreds of times more powerful. And recently, somebody I know that went to the Verizon cellphone told them that if you... That none of the phones are going to work on 4G, you're going to be forced, if you have a cellphone, to use 5G, and that you're going to have to upgrade your phones and have no service. So it's very serious. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes the oral communication. We...
Mayor, can we just get back information about what the residency requirement is for Loudon Nelson?
Yes, I was going to do that. If you want to talk about it right now, I mean, we can ask for direction to find out what the residency requirement is. Let me ask, and I'll just maybe ask you, are you a resident of the City of Santa Cruz?
Yes, I am.
You are? And what is the address, if you want to write it down, and we can just check to make sure?
Yeah, I provided all the addresses to staff.
Okay, so thank you. We'll look into that, and we'll get back with you.
Do you have...
Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll get back with you. Okay, let me just say that that concludes oral communication. We're going to return back at 7:00 PM for an evening session, but we'll have a... We'll have to clear the room now until we begin our 7:00 PM session. So thank you for being here.
His driver's license is there.
Oh, I didn't see that.
We'll let him look at it. I mean, I know.
Shoshil is asking a question.
Oh, okay. Good evening. Welcome to our now 7:05 session of the October 9, 2018, meeting of the city council. I'd now like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Crone...
Here.
Matthews?
Here.
Chase is absent. Brown is currently absent. Naroyan is currently absent. Vice Mayor Watkins?
Here.
And Mayor Trazo.
Here. Before we begin, we did have some extra space set up in another room, but we're right now looking at our sole item on this evening's agenda. This item is to review the fiscal and administrative analysis of the Santa Cruz Rent Control and Tenant Protection Act. We'll have a presentation from our planning department and the consultant that developed the report. We'll, again, begin with a presentation, then we'll follow with staff or questions from the council, then we'll take public comment and return to the council for deliberation and action. There were two people who requested additional comment time after the presentation in advance of the meeting. That was Cynthia Berger from the Santa Cruz Tenants Association. Are you here, Ms. Berger? Okay, thanks. And also Josie Buchanan from Santa Cruz Together. Are you here? Thanks. Okay, I'd like to now turn it over to Planning Director Lee Butler.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Good evening. On June 26 of this year, after receiving verification from the county clerk that the Santa Cruz Rent Control and Tenant Protection Act petition had the minimum number of signatures required to place that item on the November ballot, the council voted to do just that, place the item on the November ballot. And so on November 6, the voters will be deciding on Measure M, and if approved, Measure M would mandate the creation of a rent board that is elected and put in place various rent control and just cause eviction criteria. At that same June 26 meeting, the council directed staff to hire a consultant to evaluate the fiscal and administrative effects of the act as they would apply to the city. The council did not request a market-based analysis, only fiscal and administrative analyses. Staff prepared a request for proposals and sent it out to interested parties, including the two main groups representing the proponents and opponents of the measure. We had a number of responses that were received, all from very highly qualified firms, and we selected the law firm of Colentuno, Highsmith, and Watley to prepare the independent analysis. The report that they prepared was included in your packet, and with that, I'd like to introduce Michael Colentuno to present the findings of the report.
Good evening. As expected, I'm Michael Colentuno. I'm a local government attorney. I have practiced in California for about 30 years, and have represented a broad range of local governments. My particular expertise is in the revenue side of local government finance, but I also have a broad grounding in all of the things that cities do. And what I have done is what you have asked me to do, which was to study the measure and gather data about the experiences of other rent control cities, to help you to appreciate the impacts of this measure on your government. It's not... I did not attempt to evaluate the impacts of this measure on your marketplace, your economy, your tenants, your landlords. So with that explanation, let's dive into the slides, which summarize my report, and allow me to expand upon it for you. The rent board and the city council will be two legislative bodies in one agency. That creates opportunities for conflict, because your powers will overlap to some extent, and it also creates opportunities for cooperation. The rent board will control rents, evictions, and relocation assistance. The city council will continue to control land use, building codes, and code enforcement, and has some authority to supplement the policies of the rent board. The city attorney's role is affected by the measure, too. The rent board will appoint its own counsel. The city attorney is required to defend the initiative, but should he be unable or unwilling to do so, the measure allows private parties to do so at public expense. The rent board can pursue civil remedies against landlords to enforce its rent control and just eviction policies, but it can't pursue criminal remedies. Only the city attorney has that authority in conjunction with the district attorney. The reason your charter and most charters provide that there's one city attorney who advises all city officials is to prevent legal fights within the organization. If you all got one lawyer, he or she has to sort of figure it out and can resolve legal disputes in that way. If you've got two lawyers, you will regularly have two opinions, sometimes three, and that produces the opportunity for conflict. In Berkeley, there has been some litigation between the city council and the rent board, although it's not entirely clear the law would allow that. So having two lawyers means the possibility of differing legal opinions, the likelihood of it on at least some points, particularly given that the city attorney's role will be to maximize the authority of the institution of the city as a whole, and the rent board's council's role will be to maximize the authority of the rent board. Starting up the rent board, the act obligates the city to do it. Your council will appoint the initial seven-member board. The city is required to, quote, "advance all necessary funds to ensure the effective implementation of the act." Both necessary and effective have some room for discretion within them. There's room for judgment there. This is effectively a loan. That's what the word "advance" means, and the loan is to be repaid from future housing feeds, if they're established, if they survive the legal challenge, and they are collected. I think all of those things are likely to be true eventually. We just can't tell how quickly, how long the loan would be outstanding. City management staff would staff the board until it hires an executive director. The rent board is to be treated like your other departments are, in terms of receiving support from the city clerk, finance, HR, IT, and other administrative departments. It's subject to cost sharing as other departments are. What that means is if it's your current practice not to charge your departments for certain things, like space in City Hall, you won't be able to charge the rent board for those things until you change your cost allocation practice for everybody. So as long as they're treated like everyone else, you can make them pay their full share of the cost of running their programs. programs, they can request certain services from the city attorney, the building official, and code enforcement staff, but those requests don't have to be honored, and if they're honored, they don't have to be honored for free, so what will this cost, the short and honest answer is, I don't know, because no one can know, because we can't predict with certainty the choices that an elected rent board will make, what we can do is make some educated guesses based on the experience of other cities, establish a range of magnitude and give you a sense of where these numbers lie, so these numbers look a little bit precise, you're gonna see $218 and round it to two digits, they're not precise at all, we don't have the ability to see the future that clearly, this is just intended as a ballpark, so these estimates are based on data collected from principally Berkeley and Santa Monica, because they're the only cities that have elected rent boards, and I think the fact of an elected rent board is a meaningful difference, a board that you report, you appoint, and that reports to you and serves at your pleasure, is likely to have a perspective that balances the other objectives of the city, a rent board that's elected to be only a rent board and is responsible only to the voters, is likely to have a perspective much more narrowly focused on rent board issues, so I think those two kinds of institutions are likely to behave differently, presumably, that's why the framers of the measure provided for an elected rent board, they thought it made a difference, and that difference is likely to have fiscal implications, I have also looked at data from Richmond, because it's the latest startup city, Mountain View is a startup city, but we couldn't get their data quickly enough to put it in your report, and we have a data point from West Hollywood, the relevance of which to you is debatable, which is that West Hollywood is the one city that we identified that subdues, supports their rent board budget with general city revenues, one could argue, we haven't had a chance to talk to them about it, that was intended to make for a more ambitious program, one could argue that was intended to keep rent fees down, housing fees down, it could do one or the other, I don't have any way to read the Rorschach plot on that, and I'm sure it's arguable, okay, so that's, those are our data sources, let's see, what will actually happen, we'll turn on such things as the choices the rent board makes, whether Prop 10 passes in November, it's behind at the moment, but there's a month ago and a lot of money to be spent, so who knows where that's going, whether litigation delays implementation of the measure, et cetera, so, who are we looking at in terms of our comparators, and what are some of the relevant data about them, Berkeley's rent board has a budget of $5.17 million, it has 22 full-time equivalent staff, it has twice Santa Cruz's population, it has 20,000 units under regulation, and its housing fee is $250 a year per unit, Santa Monica's budget is $5.7 million, it has 25 full-time equivalent employees, it has one and a half times your population, it has 26,360 units regulated, and its fee is $198 a year per unit, you could say there's some economies of scale there, you could say that Santa Monica is less ambitious than Berkeley, there's lots of ways to interpret these numbers, and as I noted, West Hollywood, perhaps uniquely, we haven't surveyed all of the rent control cities out there, but that's the only city we know about that provides a general fund subsidy, and of course, a general fund subsidy is not required, that would be a decision for your council and every future council, so, assuming a range of 5,100 to 5,800 units subject to both rent control and just cause eviction, I'm focusing on rent control and not just cause eviction, because most rent boards do not provide very substantial services on the just cause eviction side, they don't send a lawyer into every courtroom for every tenant, most of their energy goes into rent control, not just cause eviction, so we think rent control is the right data point to use in estimating, and again, these are just estimates of costs, $216 and $258 are adjustments of the numbers I gave you on the last slide for Berkeley and Santa Monica's fees, adjusted to the number of units of housing that you have to regulate, so we took their fee, their budget, divided it by their number of units to get at a price per unit, and applied that to your estimated number of units, and that's where the 216 and 258 come from, again, they end in, in two digits, but they're just rough orders of magnitude, that budget, 5,100 low estimated units times the low fee gets you a minimum budget of $1,001 a year, if you apply the 5,800 number to the largest budget, gets you $1,005, so it's $1,001 to $1,005 is a rough order of magnitude for a rent control program in the city, if you were to grant a 30% subsidy, that would go to 1.4 to 1.9, there's a pretty wide range there, from 1.1 to 1.9, that's almost doubling, but still, you know the order of magnitude, it's not 20 million, it's not 20,000, it's a million or two, so, what about startup costs, this is, to be quite honest, a wild-ass guess, this is just my sense of what a minimal startup team would likely look like, an executive director, two analysts, and an administrative assistant, just to get started, post your agendas, conduct your meetings, write your staff reports, help you develop policies, et cetera, Berkeley's got 22, Santa Monica's got 25, you're probably looking at a lot more than four eventually, and you, and it will take more than four people to consume a budget of $2 million, but just getting started, I think you're probably looking at four people, I assumed $150,000 fully loaded per position, because that's about what you spend in your community development department, obviously, 150 averaging an executive director and a secretary, an average describes neither of them, but it's just, again, a rule of thumb, so I'm looking at about $600,000 in just personnel for that startup phase, there are obviously other costs too, which we really haven't tried to model, now, we looked at Richmond's startup costs, because they're, that's the best nearby city that did something similar recently, their measure was approved in November of 16, they have 958 units subject to rent control and just cause eviction, they have 10,460 units subject to just cause eviction only, those are units built after '95 that are protected from rent control by the Hawkins, Costa-Hawkins, which we'll talk about in a minute, that's about 20,000 units in total, their budget for the remainder of the fiscal year in which the measure was passed, it was $1.15 million, their budget for the first full fiscal year is $2.8 million, because Richmond has almost twice the number of regulated units as Santa Cruz, take that 1.1 number and double it to 2.3, you're, it shows that 1.1 to 1.9 wide range like I gave you seems to be on the money, it's, this is a way to sort of validate these estimates, but again, these are all just estimates, who pays for this, these are the funding sources available to your housing board under this measure if it passes, first is a housing fee on landlords, which this measure says cannot be passed through to tenants, but which constitutional law is gonna be required to be recovered from rents, because it's gonna be a lawful cost of the business, and the Constitution requires the business to be allowed to recover its lawful costs and a fair rate of return on their investment, so tenants are gonna pay that fee one way or the other, whether it shows up on a rental statement or in a separate bill from the landlord or not, they're gonna pay it one way or the other, service fees on tenants, the rent board may charge tenants for services, so for example, if they're providing information or assistance in the just cause eviction setting, they might choose to means test their services and provide subsidized services to the poor and charge a fee to the folks who could afford a lawyer if they wanted one, most rent boards have at least some fees coming in, even if they're only public records copying costs, and then there's the possibility of a general fund subvention, as I said, I only know that West Hollywood does it, doesn't have to happen, it's up to your future elected leaders as to whether it does, as I mentioned, landlords are constitutionally entitled to a fair return on investment, exactly what that is is a complicated topic, the measure has a formula in it, but that formula is just a recitation of the legal standard, and the legal standard is factually dependent, which is a nice lawyerly way of saying, you get litigation, because there aren't clear answers, there's stuff to argue about, and when there's stuff to argue about and money at stake, people argue, fees may not exceed the cost of regulation, under Prop 13, Prop 26, your fees have to cover the cost of your regulatory program, the trend of the Prop 26 case law, which has been coming out of late, is fairly flexible and generous to ratemakers, your city made the very first published case under Prop 26 with the late Mr. Griffith, which upheld a, a, a fee that was calculated in a fairly simple way, it was a spreadsheet, I believe, from your planning department, saying, "This is how many permits we expect to issue, this is the full-time cost, the grossed-up cost of the staff are gonna do it, permits divided by dollars equals a permit fee," that fairly simple fee-making was upheld in Griffith versus City of Santa Cruz, so as long as they have a basis to demonstrate that not just, you know, running the police department on the rent fee, they'll be fine in covering their costs, so I don't think we need to have an elaborate conversation about that, all fees will affect rents, but rents are essential to fund, the rent fees are essential to fund the rent board, so there's this tension between, you want a high fee for an ample program to accomplish the social good in the world you're trying to accomplish, but the higher the fee, the more impact there is on tenants, so that balance between how much can we afford is going to be the rent board's challenge, state law, the Ellis Act entitles landlords to get out of the rental housing business, they can move in and make it an owner-occupied property, they can sell it for owner-occupied use, they can convert an apartment building into condos, they can convert a residential structure to non-residential use if your zoning allows it, so there are ways to get out of the regulated marketplace and recapture that, that real estate value, the Costa-Hawkins Act mandates vacancy decontrol, under Costa-Hawkins, rent control prevents the landlord from raising the rent during a tenancy, when the space goes vacant, the landlord has freedom to set whatever rent the market will bear, and then the new tenant is protected again, so rent control protects incumbent tenants without respect to their income, vacancy control protects units without respect to who lives in them, so vacancy decontrol, which requires you to protect only incumbent tenants while they're incumbent, makes for a more modest rent control program, and rents in Santa Monica rose very rapidly after Costa-Hawkins became the law, incumbent tenants were protected, but affordable housing was not, so the rent control versus vacancy decontrol is a crucial distinction, Costa-Hawkins imposes vacancy decontrol statewide, if it's repealed in November, three restrictions on rent control will go away, one is the mandated vacancy decontrol, two is the exemption for single-family properties, and three is the exemption for properties constructed after 1995, and in your case, that's significant, because it would greatly increase the number of units subject to your rent board's authority, and that affects, of course, the scope of work and the budget, so, let's see, here's a controversial statement, "The number of regulated units can be expected to decline under rent control as landlords exercise their Ellis Act rights and as fewer rental units are developed," there is authority for that proposition, there's some studies of the number of units in Berkeley and Santa Monica, there is the legislative analyst's analysis of Prop 10, and there's a somewhat disputed report from an economist named Rosen at Berkeley, there are counter-arguments, I did not mean to wade into these arguments about market effects, because you didn't ask me to, and because it is debatable, so why is it in my report, when you're doing fiscal modeling, it is important to be conservative in your projections, because if you staff up and then can't fund those people and lay people off, bad things happen to those people and to your credibility as an employer and your ability to deliver services to the people that you serve, so in the fiscal context, I think it makes sense to accept this premise, even if you don't accept it in the marketplace analysis setting, so we should be prepared for the possibility that these numbers will overstate your financial wherewithal and overstate how much you can fund of a program, but I really didn't mean to wade into the debate about effects on the housing marketplace, because you specifically asked me not to, Prop 10, if Prop 10 passes in November, it repeals Costa-Hawkins, and this measure specifically terminates vacancy decontrol, it requires vacancy control in your city, and it requires your rent board to enforce vacancy control, and the option to get out of vacancy control for some or all parts of your housing market would require another initiative, another ballot measure, so there's a particular choice in this measure, and it's, it's a policy choice that's an appropriate one for your community to make, but it, but it is there and it should be understood, if Prop 10 passes, the number of regulated units will increase, the workload of the board will increase, Berkeley's executive director predicts his staff will double if Prop 10 passes, they've had rent control for a much longer time, so the number of units that would come back into their marketplace is large, it's behind in the published polls, but well-funded campaigns are underway, for and against, and nobody can foresee the future, because if we could, we'd all be betting on the stock market, so, if Prop 10 passes, here's the impact we see on your budgets, we think the number of units goes to 12,404, that's taken right out of the census number of units in your community, that's why there's only one number in both lines, again, that 2.16 into 58 fee, which we talked about previously, takes your budget up to 2.7 to 3.2 rather than 1.1 to 1.4, and if you gross it up by 30%, just because one city did, you're in the 3.54 to 4.2 range. Only two recommendations, one is, if it passes, we recommend that the city council negotiate a memorandum of understanding with the rent board to clarify roles and responsibilities to provide for that startup loan and the terms under which it will be repaid, Berkeley has effectively an understanding that was worked out casually and painfully over years of cohabitation and conflict, I think doing it thoughtfully in writing at the beginning of the relationship can probably save you a lot of storm and drong over the years, the only second recommendation is your staff's, and that is, take public comment and receive and file this report, no action on this report is recommended to you, I'm happy to take questions now, I'm also happy to get out of the way and let you talk to your constituents and take questions later.
Great, thank you so much for that report, I'll ask, are there any council member questions at this time, Councilmember Crone?
Yeah, hi, thanks for the, the presentation, one of the big questions was 30%, why did you include that, that at all, because, I mean, there's 15 cities that have rent control in the state of California, is that the only one that does this, that takes money out of the, the general fund budget?
It's the only one that I know of, and as I've told you, there's two ways to interpret it, either the city council's trying to protect the tenants from a large housing fee, or the city council's trying for a more ambitious housing program, and I can't tell you which that is, I put it in to give you a sense of the range of possibilities for your community, but that's a choice that you have to make, as well as the rent board, and you have to make it every year.
Did you mean protect, like landlords from paying the fee, or why tenants from charging, what fee do they pay?
When the landlord pays the housing fee, they're constitutionally entitled to recover it from rents, so if you're trying to keep rents low, you need to keep housing fees low, and using general fund money to operate the rent control board so that housing fees don't have to, has that effect, because rent, not all tenants are low-income, this protects every tenant, not low-income tenants, what some communities do is they let you pass through some of it, or they let you pass through all of it and then rebate it to those who prove to the city that they're low-income, so they pass it through to everyone, and then you can come to City Hall and get it if you're low-income.
Yeah, I like that, as part of it.
This one prohibits an overt pass-through, but it can't prohibit the implicit pass-through, because the Constitution requires it.
And you're saying that on page three, it says, "We conclude a successful challenge to elected rent board is unlikely," and then you footnote it at the bottom, it's 2007, that was, that recently, huh?
Berkeley got sued when they passed theirs and won, Santa Monica got sued when they passed theirs and won, I don't think there's any serious question that rent control conceptually is constitutional, I don't think there's a serious question that this measure is constitutional, that doesn't mean you may not end up in court about it.
Right, and it's, it's a charter amendment in both those cities?
That's correct.
And on page four-
Berkeley's is an ordinance, I think it was, an ordinance followed by a charter amendment to create the rent board, rent control was an ordinance in Berkeley, Santa Monica's a charter amendment for both.
On page four, the, it says that we conclude that the rent board must fund prosecution, prosecutions, what is, what do you mean by that?
It means they don't get the city attorney's services for free, if they want them, they have to pay for them.
On page five, you said that led to conflicting legal opinions, do you have any examples of that, about the city attorney represents all city officers, but that fact will likely lead to conflicting legal opinions?
I'm defending the City of Riverside at the moment from a lawsuit filed by the mayor alleging that his veto power extends to the city manager's contract, that's an example of when there's more than one lawyer advising city officials you get conflict, the fact that the city council of Berkeley once thought the rent board was too generous to landlords and sued them over their general rate increase, shows you that two lawyers means different opinions, as for what it's worth, the rent board won.
I thought that was a really interesting case, too, on page six, you said, "We conclude that the city is not obliged to grant such requests," that is, that request the city to conduct, well, when, if the rent board wants sort of money or a supplement to its budget, it's not shall, but it's a request, right, and the city council can turn it down?
The only thing you're obliged to do in terms of money is loan the startup costs.
According to the, the way the ordinance is written?
That's right.
Or the charter amendment, I was, I have a question for the city manager, do you remember when we started, like, the recycling programs and the yard waste programs, there wasn't immediate income coming in from people paying bills, we had to put up upfront startup costs?
I wasn't here when, when that was started up, so I, I can't recollect, I think, although it isn't necessarily completely uncommon for there to be startup costs to- I think, although it isn't necessarily completely uncommon for there to be startup costs provided for various, you know, city public purposes.
Thanks. On page seven, you talk about code enforcement. Do you know of any rent board that has that power, that have higher code enforcers? Would that be one of the analysts? Could that be one of their job descriptions to also be a code enforcer? Or is that getting to the territory of the planning department?
I don't think anybody does it. I don't think there's a legal reason you couldn't do it. I also think it's a really bad idea. The reason I think it's a bad idea is that code enforcement involves a whole lot of codes that expect a whole lot of things out of property owners. And if you've got one set of code enforcement staff that's just looking at tenancy habitability issues, and another code enforcement staff that's looking at zoning compliance, land use compliance, noise, other stuff, you're going to have to coordinate the efforts of those two, and you're going to create inefficiency and duplication of effort and cost. So I don't know anybody who does it. It doesn't make sense to me to do it that way. Having said all of that, this is pure policy, and if you had reasons to want to do it that way, you could.
And on page eight, about the fees and stuff, I assume that the $258 per unit came from the number of units divided by 5.17 million?
Yes.
But then, what was the 216 and the 198? 216 for Santa Monica, I guess, and 198 for Berkeley?
Those are their actual adopted fees on their tables at the moment.
That's what they charge landlords for each unit per year.
Yeah, it's 250 and 198, and we adjusted them to 216 and the other number to your situation for your caseload. We basically adjusted them for the number of units that you have.
The only thing I really have a hard time with in this report is putting the 30% subsidy since it's not a regular thing. Were you asked to do that, or you just did it because you thought that was?
I thought it helped frame your thinking. I didn't intend to push you towards it or push you against it, but it's, there's only 15 cities out there, so all of them, to some extent, part of your peer group.
And did you say that in the report that West Hollywood at the time had a very pro-tenant council? Is that how that came about?
There, as you know, there aren't very many non-Democrats in West Hollywood, but there are flavors of Democrats in West Hollywood, an experience with which I think you have experience. And one of the flavors of Democrats in West Hollywood is their Tenants Rights Party. That's not the name of it, but it's the Tenants Rights Organizing Committee that had a lot to do with the incorporation of that city, had a lot to do with who got on the first council.
In the city of Richmond, on page 12, did they pay back their startup costs of 1.1 million?
I don't know the answer to that, but I would be surprised because it's so fresh.
But you don't know the status, like, they're making their payments and they have a payment schedule worked out?
I didn't ask that question.
Did they do an MOU, do you know?
I don't know the answer to that.
And you don't know about Mountain View and Richmond?
Mountain View was non-communicative. They're probably busy setting it up and not busy talking about it.
Yeah. And the last thing I'll say is, on bottom of page 14, it says, "Even Berkeley's rent board staff council are members of the city's civil service," they report, and I just think that's probably, they have good labor practices in Berkeley.
Their executive director was quite frank with us, that they don't want to mess with the city unions. They don't want to have a beef with the unions about taking work away from the union's bargaining unit. I think that's partly about how their board members get elected, and it's partly about the philosophy of their board members, but they respect the union rights of the city's bargaining agents.
Thanks.
Maybe I'll just ask a follow-up on that question, because you said it was an ordinance originally in Berkeley. And so, how does that, here we have an independent charter amendment that would set up an independent board. Could you have something where these would be city employees here?
This measure requires all rent board employees to be treated as all other city employees are, with the exception of the manager, the lawyer, and the hearing officers in the hearing officer capacity. What that means is that your regular civil service system, with the city manager serving as the appointing official for everybody, is going to apply to the rent board staff. So there's a condominium here where they work for the executive director, perhaps, but they're hired and fired by the city manager. Another topic that I think could be productively included in your MOU and probably requires meet and consult with your bargaining units.
Following up on David's question, did they pass the ordinance by a vote of the people and then?
These were both initiatives.
The council went back out to the people and asked about a charter amendment for the rent board?
Voters initiated rent control, and when some folks in the community thought the council was insufficiently passionate about the subject, they then amended it by charter amendment at a subsequent election to establish an elected rent board.
Yeah, thanks. Councilmember Naroyan.
So the figure that interests me is the $600,000 startup fee, and that doesn't count a lot of other expenses that you mentioned in here. What is your experience looking at other places where these have been, where, you know, the fees, the city needs to provide the funding for the startup? How long does it take for a rent board to become self-sufficient where the city isn't providing funds for its operation?
If the rent, if the housing fee is collected on the property tax roll, which may be the most efficient way to do it, you're going to create this in November of 18. You're going to get the data to the assessor in August of 19, and you're going to start seeing income in December of 19. So you'll see a half a year's worth of the initial housing fee in December of 19 if there's no slips between now and August. You should be able to accomplish that unless there's a lawsuit, and even if there's a lawsuit, a court should be unwilling to prevent you from collecting the money in the interim. So I think a rational, a reasonable expectation is that you'll have money coming in the door from the primary money source in December of 19. You'll start incurring costs in November of 18, and so you've got a little more than a year where you've got money out the door and no money in.
Okay, so that's a year where the city is providing support for this operation. And then, at that point, do you know, you know, is there an interim time between when the city, you know, is no longer providing the money to when it's fully self-sufficient?
I think that you're asking the rent board to take a year's worth of income each year to cover their activities in that year and pay back the debt. The more quickly you require them to pay back the debt, the less services they can provide. So there's a judgment call to be made for this council and that board about how much you can afford to invest in this socially beneficent effort, and how ambitious you want them to be how quickly. And striking that balance is what negotiations are for.
And so I assume that these other cities that we're talking about have budgets similar to Santa Cruz. They're tight, they're shoestring, you know, we're trying to pay for services, pay for salaries, you know, and we're looking at even making cuts because of the CalPERS or the pension liability. So what have you seen these other cities cut in terms of services to backfill this operation for a year? Like, is there a typical way that cities are going about cutting their other services to backfill this?
I don't know the answer to that question, and I would expect each city, you know, there's that ancient, there's that line from Anna Karenina, "Every happy family is the same, and every unhappy family is unhappy in its own way." I think all 15 budgets are unhappy in their own way.
Okay, okay. So you haven't seen a typical, like, we cut parks, we cut, okay. All right, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Did I quote the wrong Russian novel?
No, no.
That's the first time I think Anna Karenin has been referenced here to the council. I wanted to ask two questions. I didn't, I don't recall reading in the report, but for Santa Monica, West Hollywood, Berkeley, Richmond, those are all elected rent boards?
There's only two elected rent boards.
Okay.
That's why I spend so much time talking about Berkeley and Santa Monica.
Okay, so for the elected rent boards, the costs of elections that are folded into the fees that are charged?
They should be, yes.
And what are the costs, if you know, for elections there?
Your clerk or your city manager is going to have a more useful answer to that question than I am, because it varies from place to place. I'm sure it's non-trivial.
Okay. The other question I had, just in relation to that, when there's, over time, as you look to see maybe the cost structure of the operation changes, how does that work in terms of then levying new fees on the landlords? Is that something that's required a vote? Like, when we think of we want to raise a tax or a fee on the public, is that something that would have to go for a vote of the people? So is there any legal issue there? I know the rent, you said there's no constitutional issue regarding the issue of, you know, forming a rent board, but what about the actual fees that are levied for the services that are being provided by the rent board?
Because these are regulatory fees, assuming they're limited to the cost of regulation, which is the reasonable cost of implementing this charter amendment, they can be imposed without a hearing, without an election, without notice. They just have to be cost justified.
And then, is the rent board would be the body that would oversee the justification for the fee?
That's right.
Okay.
And were there a challenge to the fee, they would be the ones to defend it when they have money to defend it with, which will be a couple of years out.
And for those rent boards that you looked at, for the two elected rent boards, did they also, you said you used a factor of their salary. What was the salaries for the rent board? You had the administrative staff estimates, but I didn't see you put in a estimate for the cost of the rent boards there.
I didn't gather that data, but I would be surprised if it is meaningful in budget terms. You know, on a budget of a million, one to two million, even if they gave them salary and benefits totaling $10,000 a year apiece, that's $50,000 or $70,000. I don't know what they're spending, and it's going to be politically relevant, but in terms of the kind of budget numbers we're talking about, it's likely to be, I don't want to say decimal dust, but maybe a rounding error.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Brown, and then Vice Mayor Watkins.
Just add a follow-up question there. So I just want to be, thank you, first of all, for the study. I really appreciated it, and I want to particularly thank you for this being underwhelming, as I had suspected it would be. But, so, you know, we've been hearing from, and I get the mail in my mailbox at home, suggestion that rent board members could be paying themselves seven-figure salaries. I suppose in theory that's true, but I just want to clarify that based upon your read, you think that that's unlikely?
Rent board members are subject to recall, and this is not a town quiet about the exercise of its political rights.
So that was one question, and then, we'll all leave it there for now, because I may have other questions based upon the comments or questions that come from the audience. Thank you.
Mayor, it looks like Transparent California has it up on their website for rent board members, and it looks like that's what we get as council members, $30,000 around, and $30,000 benefits, healthcare and stuff, about $60,000.
Per person.
Looks like it.
Okay. All right. Vice Mayor Watkins.
Thank you for the report. I know it was a quick kind of timeline. I apologize if I missed it, but one of the things I heard was the $600,000 for staffing, but that the city would subsidize office space, is that correct?
Obviously, people need computers and internet service and offices and all of that stuff, and I haven't attempted to budget that, except by showing you what Richmond is spending, which is roughly twice that.
And Richmond, that was a charter amendment, or was it ordinance there, if you recall?
I believe Richmond is a general law city.
Okay.
So that would be an initiative ordinance.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'm going to open it up for the public. Any other questions at this time? I'm going to ask for public comment, and then there might be some follow-up questions after that. Thank you. Excellent presentation and report. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item that are present today? We're going to start, first of all, with two organizations that requested additional time. Cynthia Berger of the Santa Cruz Tenants Association, she requested four minutes, and then Josie Buchanan of Santa Cruz Together. Then if any other members of the public wish to speak after they're concluded with their presentation, if you'd please line up to my left, your right, you'll have two minutes each to speak. So Ms. Berger, you have four minutes. You have four minutes.
Hi. I recently spoke to Nicholas Trailer, who is executive director of the Richmond Rent Board. They do not receive any pay. I recently spoke to Lenny Siegel, who is the mayor of Mountain View. They do not receive any pay. These are the most recent ones. None of their board members receive any pay. That is their, these are cities where, you know, commissioners don't generally receive pay. Both of those cities, they are appointed, though, so those are, that's a little different. But just so you know that. As far as just about evictions, I, most of evictions are dealt with in court. So just cause eviction is a law, a regulation that has to be followed, but the people who enforce that are more likely to be the court than the rent board. There may be some appeal to the rent board, but evictions are dealt with in court. So that was just a question I had when the gentleman was speaking. The payback from, the payments are on schedule in Mountain View according to Mayor Lenny Siegel. Whatever deal they made to pay them back, they're on schedule. I believe in Richmond, they've already paid back their original loan. That's what I was told by Nicholas Trailer. I'm going to just read a little bit here. First, the report emphasizes again and again, financial, under almost every point, that any financial or administrative support that the city were to extend to the rent board would be at the city's discretion and is not required. The separation of budgets is built into the language of Measure M itself. Furthermore, as city staff has suggested, if there's any ambiguity or lack of clarity, a memorandum of understanding with the rent board can be written before any funds are advanced for the transition stage. In order to clarify this matter for voters, we suggest that city council ask the city attorney during your discussion today if there's any language in Measure M that would require city funding of the rent board. I think that was answered fairly well, including staffing office space, information technology, and general purchases. It is the intention of Measure M that the rent board be entirely self-funding.
Is this part of, pause, please. Is this part of your four minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you going to? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That's all pretty much that I have to say. I did want to say that Richmond, yes, being a poor city, but, and with a six-point, over 6% vacancy rate, they're still able to charge and get over $200 a unit from their landlords, and they decided that that was a reasonable thing to ask. And the city is a strange combination of both richer and probably poorer than Richmond, and so I think that that amount is not an extra-high amount, over $200 per unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Josie Buchanan from Santa Cruz Together. You have four minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Josie Buchanan, and I'm here today representing Santa Cruz Together, the 100% locally funded and managed campaign against Measure M. I am here tonight, not in our normal capacity, to tell you and the public at home why we oppose Measure M. At this point, I feel confident that you all know how we feel and why. So we at Santa Cruz Together do not wish to spend any more of your time telling you about this measure. Instead, I'm here today to say thank you for all you do for our community. As elected representatives, some of you who are running for reelection currently, we applaud the effort you have undertaken to provide a greater degree of transparency and voter information through this study that has been provided to you today. The issue of housing in Santa Cruz is extraordinarily complex and highly contested. Everyone agrees that housing is a problem and that people all across the board are facing this crisis, but there seems to be almost no semblance of an agreement on a solution. More information can only be helpful in the public decision-making process, especially when that information is not subject to an outcome. Thank you again for the service you do for our community and for commissioning this study. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, now, at this point, we're going to transition to any other members of the public that would like to speak to this item. Are there anyone here who wants to speak to this item? Seated? Nobody? So just those standing. There's three people? Okay. Three people, you'll have two minutes.
Hi, always nice to be back. My name is Barbara Childs. I sent you a long and sort of detailed technical response to the report, and because it's so complicated, I was planning to read it, but since so many of the issues have been dealt with so well, it had to do particularly with the 30%. I thought that was an unnecessary red flag, making it seem as if rent boards might actually, and I just hope the press or other opposition groups don't pick that up as if somehow Santa Cruz will, might have to spend 30% subsidy for the rent board. I think that was a red flag, and even though I understand the intention of Mr. Colin Tuono, I love the name, I think it could be very confusing. I also would like to reiterate what Cynthia requested of the city council, which is that in your further discussion and deliberations, you asked our city attorney to say very clearly whether there is any language in Measure M that would absolutely require payment to the rent board. In other words, all of the literature that's going out, horrible literature, shocking literature, seems to me it should be illegal to send this sort of thing out. The help-wanted city of Santa Cruz seeks help running new city department. Create your own your own salary, benefits and pension could be included. That's shocking. So I just would really appreciate one of you asking our city attorney whether anything in Measure M specifically requires the city of Santa Cruz to pay the rent board. I think it would be good to have a really clear statement from our attorney. It's complex, and we got the complexity from the consultant. So actually, I really, I just want to say right now.
Please, no, you can finish this, finish off.
No, it was more than a sentence. It was a story.
Oh, okay. Well, if you can send it to us, we'll read it.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Thanks. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Stanley Sokolow. Something that the attorney just mentioned confuses me a little bit, I want clarification from it, maybe you do too. Regarding if somebody challenges the validity of the charter amendment, and the city attorney chooses not to defend it, then a private party can defend it at city expense. Does that mean, win or lose, the city has to pay a private attorney who chooses to defend the charter? And at what rate is it, is it normal rate, or the city's rate, or what? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Carol Pohamus, how are you? Thank you for all your hard work in this arena, and thank you for that report. I thought it was really great to be able to read a report like that as a layperson and grasp it, so I appreciate the simplicity and clarity. So I have one question that's been bothering me for the last couple of weeks that has not been addressed, either in Measure M or in anything else I've heard at the city council meetings. And this is something that came up around the short-term rental, vacation rental issue also. We don't know how many rentals are in the city. We know the people who come forward and do the rental inspection, and fill out the forms, and pay the transient occupancy tax, and all the people that do that, but there is undeniably a large group of people who don't. So I want to know if you've thought about what will the provisions be for figuring out who has rentals? And what department's going to manage that? And is, I don't think the city has the bandwidth to do that. So where does that factor in? That's just a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Just a point of detail from one of the previous comments. I'm reading from the Mountain View Voice regarding a meeting that they held regarding the budget for the rent, the rent control program. Just an excerpt. Regardless of who foots the bill, the budget for the new rent control program received a lukewarm response from pretty much everyone. Tenant and landlord advocates both said the city officials should have tried harder to limit its costs. Among its significant expenses, the program budget will create four new city positions which cost an average of about $170,000 in annual compensation. In addition to the new staffers, the budget calls for spending about $775,000 on a variety of consultants, lawyers, and hearing officers to help administer the program. City staff reminded the committee that they had a considerable $430,000 debt to pay back to the city of Mountain View for the program's costs incurred so far. Just a point of detail.
Okay, thanks. And that was from the Mountain View Voice? Just send the link if you have a chance to. Okay. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. First of all, there were three questions that came up during, during the, during the discussion. The first was asked originally by the organizational speaker, and then came up again, is, are there any costs required from the city to fund the rent control program? And that's, that was the one that I, I think started that off. Please, go ahead.
The startup loan only.
Startup loan only. Do you have another phone?
Relative to that, as I understood it, the city would be required to support the rent board with basic operating costs to the extent that it did that for other departments.
That's right. You have to treat it like other departments, and if other departments get things without charge, the rent board would too. My sense is that if you're doing that, you will stop.
A portion to departments.
You're going to do a cost recovery program.
Okay. All right. The second one was in regards to liability of the city to defend the charter for legal fees in the event, or the, a charter, a charter litigation, in the event that the city declined to, to, to litigate.
Yeah, if the measure is challenged, and the city attorney were to decline to defend, and the proponents or another private party defended it, and they were a prevailing party, basically if they won, they would be entitled to seek attorney's fees under what's called the Private Attorney General statute. And that statute pays you quite a bit more than a regular-paying client would. There's usually a multiplier applied in order to reward people for success, because we know when, they're not going to get paid for failure, and you're trying to make sure there's a living there. So I would imagine that that's going to be a substantial six-figure sum. And if the litigation were protracted and went to the appellate courts, it could be, you know, a half a million bucks.
Okay, thank you. And the third question was, what types of provisions, maybe in other communities they've done this, but to, that have taken place to analyze the housing supply, to have a clear understanding of what are the number of units who could potentially have an assessment for the fees, or that fall under different categories of applicable law?
Yeah, there were, I heard two aspects to that question. One is, how do we count, just so we know what we're planning for? And the answer is, we make the best estimates we can using available data sources, and the best data source at the moment is the U.S. Census. Let's hope it stays that way, but we'll see what the federal government does this time. So we're using census data and making reasoned judgments from that census data. The second aspect of the question was, how do you enforce this against underground rentals? You're, you're living in a unit, you moved to Europe, rent it, and don't reveal to the government that it's now a rental. It may be very difficult for us to track that. That is something that the rent board will grapple with, and it will be, I think, quite a bit like enforcing your business license ordinance. If somebody opens a business in town and doesn't tell you, how do you know about it? You may notice them, you may go looking for them, you may get complaints. Will enforcement be perfect? Of course not. There was another question I heard that you may not have, that I think is worth commenting on, and that is, what's the role of the rent board with respect to just cause eviction enforcement? It is not meaningless, but it is not nearly as demanding as rent control. There are two aspects to it. One is that every eviction notice has to be filed with the rent board. So there's a data-keeping, data-collecting, and perhaps data-analyzing role that will have some cost and some social benefit. The second is that the Berkeley Rent Board Executive Director said, see, when you evict a tenant in a rent control jurisdiction, you have to prove to the court that you're in compliance with the rent control ordinance in order to evict. So therefore, the local Superior Court Housing Department, such as it is, whatever department takes these cases, is going to become intimately familiar with your rent board's requirements. And will, and Berkeley sometimes hauls them into court as effectively an amicus to say, I'm getting these two competing arguments about what your regulations are and mean, could you come tell me? So they experience some costs for lawyers to go assist the court in the just cause eviction context. But they were upfront with us. They said, we spend more lawyer's time on public records requests than we do on just cause eviction.
City Manager Martine Burnau.
I just wanted to clarify a little bit more on the fiscal impact. It's in the fiscal impact section of the agenda report, but the other piece that's unclear is the leasing of spaces and the costs, because we don't, we're required, as was noted, that we treat the, the rent board as the same way as we treat other general fund operations where, where we don't charge rent. However, so we wouldn't be able to do that. However, we could change that practice and, and charge departments, but currently that is not our practice to charge general fund departments for leasing spaces. So that's in the fiscal report, but I just want to clarify that.
Just as a follow-up, don't we, the city, doesn't the city charge through enterprise funds the use of space?
We charge our enterprise funds, but not the general fund departments.
So wouldn't this be equivalent to an enterprise fund?
It says all city departments, so I think that may mean the most favored city department.
Okay.
Doesn't mean they get the kind of public funding the police department does, because the police department can't be fee-funded, but it means that the police department's not charged rent. This agency probably can't be charged for it either.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilmember Brown.
So I actually did, I, I do have a question that I thought might be worth asking right now, since you're here. So we're being asked tonight to accept this report, which I'm prepared to move when the time comes. But I also wanted to, you have another recommendation in the report, and you mentioned it here tonight, about the city council's consideration of a memorandum of understanding with the rent board should Measure M pass. And so I was hoping you could just talk a little bit more about the kinds of things that might be included in the, in such a MOU. I'm fully supportive of doing that when, if and when the time comes, hopefully when for me. But I, you know, just want to kind of understand what you consider to be some of the parameters for such an MOU.
I think the report touches on most of them, but the broadly described, it's the startup loan and its repayment. It is other services made available to the rent board on what terms, what do they get for free, what do they pay for, how do they pay for it? And delineating the authority of rent board, the board itself and its staff, and the authority of other city actors. So it may be useful to give some thought to who's going to do code enforcement, who's going to do civil prosecution, who's going to do criminal prosecution? Can they request the city attorney's services? Does he have the right to say no? What happens when he says no? Those sorts of things might be helpfully thought through in the advance of any particular instance, so you can have sort of decent rules of the road before you're in the heat of a political moment.
So I, yeah, and thank you. I saw the, the overall parameters. I guess I'm thinking more about things like how much the, should, given that we're required to fund startup costs, how, you have an estimate here based upon, I mean, that's an educated guess, as you suggest, but if we were to be asked for significantly more for startup costs by the initially-appointed rent board, is there a way for us to, I mean, do we have any leeway there?
I think so. I think what's likely to happen is that the rent board will hire an executive director, and he or she will sketch out an initial strategy and a budget, and come to you and say, here's what I'd like, can you swing this? And there's going to be a negotiation. That's my expectation. And if you are lucky, your rent board will choose somebody who can collaborate well with your city manager. And if you're unlucky, the city attorney will be on his toes early.
I've got a question just on, kind of related to what Councilmember Brown mentioned. When you talked with some of the other jurisdictions that have this rent control board, how much time did staff spend working with these newly-formed organizations in terms of, it may not be captured in the actual rent board organization, but how much additional time external to the, the work of the rent board was city staff doing to help support it that may not be necessarily captured as a cost?
After the startup phase, I think it's reasonable to project that the rent board will need as much staff support as the city council does. So as much staff as you put into doing agendas, and answering your questions, and providing your agenda packs, and, and helping you correspond with your constituents in all the means that you do, that same level of what I call secretariat support, they're going to need. And one political dynamic I see, particularly in the two cities that have elected rent boards, is that the easiest way to prevent political conflict between elected officials who don't answer to anybody except every two or four years is to treat the two boards alike. So there's an awful lot of, well, if you're getting a pension at this level, I'm getting a pension at this level. If you get to use a room that looks like that, I get to use a room that looks like this. An awful lot of conscious parity to avoid the alternative.
And was that, just if I could follow up, was that cost, I know you contemplated it, but was that cost captured in your analysis?
I've got a budget for it somewhere, and we're working with their all-in budget.
Councilmember Crone.
It's not clear to me. If they have a budget, they're going to have analysts, you know, the, the kind of thing that we get from the city manager's office is an analyst person, and then a city clerk, but you're saying that that's not going to be paid for by the rent board itself? They're not going to have their own analysts doing that work?
I did not say that. I said the first thing, I did not say the second thing. They're going to need that support, and I assume they're going to pay for it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
They'll need more lawyers than you do. The city of West Hollywood has a contract city attorney, who is in fact one of my mentors. They have staff counsel for their rent board.
You said something interesting, too, that Berkeley went to the voters, they passed rent control, and then they, the people said, well, the city council really is not paying attention enough. And, I mean, that's the reason, I think, that we have this initiative, because the city council actually can't pay attention enough to the rents and housing. I mean, it is a huge issue that occupies a, a big part of our job up here, but not, you know, I, I just think that it needs a lot more attention, and I think that's why this has all come about.
That may be, and the, and I don't, you know, this is well outside what you asked me to think about, but I'll observe that when the city council in Berkeley sued the rent board in Berkeley, it was because the city council thought the rent board wasn't doing enough to protect tenants. So it sort of depends on who gets elected when, and which way the political winds are bowing, and personalities, and leadership, and accidents, and all that stuff.
I have a question, I, just on that. What's our budget for the city council? Just for the annualized budget? I just, I don't have that on the tip of my tongue.
I'll look it up real quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's in the half a million range. Let me just get it real quick.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Councilmember Matthews.
Oh, I just, thank you for the report. It seemed very straightforward, as someone from the public mentioned it, I think it laid out, on the one hand, this, on the other hand, that, these are your choices, and it was comprehensible to a layperson. So thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
You want a motion to accept?
Yeah, and I'll second, I'll second that motion to accept the report, and I'll also echo that, the comments. I feel like a lot of times we don't get a lot of, at least, review, and I even think of some, some of the discussion that took place regarding the housing. I'd like to see more data as far as the number of units, especially as we looked at seeing the results from Measure U in the last election, you know, some of our housing supply issues that we have that kind of play into these costs that we're talking about in terms of mitigating the cost of rent. And I think that will go a long way to help us understand kind of these decisions that we should move forward to address our housing supply.
I had a question for the city attorney about, somebody asked about requiring payment to the rent board from the city council. Can you say that, you know, without a doubt, the city council can reject any request for money after the startup costs?
I can't say that without a doubt, but you've received Mr. Colin Tuono's opinion that the, as you know, the measure states that the rent board has the authority to request and receive funding from any source, including from the city. And we have discussed whether or not the, the right to request and receive means that the rent board is entitled to receive what it requests, and frankly, we've had internal debate about that, but I think Michael's analysis is sound, and he's concluded, in his opinion, that, that it can request, but it's the city council's determination as to how much it can receive.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
The, the answer to your question about the council budget, it's about $400,000.
$400,000, okay, thanks. And that's factored into the full amount with the salaries that were there for the, okay, thank you. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor in a second?
I wanted to say, one of the things, I wanted to point out the conclusion here. In short, the act will establish a rent control, just cause eviction, and rental housing regulation comparable, comparable to those in 15 other California cities which regulate apartment rents. The city's general fund will be obligated to advance staff and funding to establish the rent board, and it's programmed to be repaid from rental housing fees on landlords when those funds are available. The rent board will be an independent policymaker with budget authority to the extent of its own resources, its own resources, and will have power to appoint some of its own staff. I just want to make that clear, that that's what we're, that's what's going on here. I feel like it's a tempest in a teapot, that this was all pretty clear to begin with. For spending $18,500, probably very well spent, but very good report.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? None?
This is accepting the report.
That's accepting the report.
Yeah, we got to accept.
That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Chase Abson. And I think, at this point, that concludes all of the business for today. The meeting is now adjourned. Say hello to that guy, he was good. He was good.